Video access but have been asked to turn off their cameras until called upon. At that time, they may use share screen capabilities if appropriate. All chat and question and answer boxes have been disabled. Is that correct? This meeting is being held video conference in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. All members of the public body and members of the public participating electronically will be considered present at the meeting and may participate as a physically present. Physically present. Members of the Planning Commission are participating from Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. If members of the body are participating from elsewhere, they need to say so identifying the county municipality and state. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak during public comment. We have no public hearings this evening. And instructions for public comment will be given at that that time. So we're calling the meeting to order at seven oh two. Secretary Chang, will you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Holland.
President Dexter Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Commissioner Moore.
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Commissioner Sharma, not present. Commissioner Corto.
Present in Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
And Commissioner Chang, present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. And Commissioner Culbertson.
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. Great, thank you. Then proceeding with the adoption of the agenda. Are there any commissioners that want to alter or add to the agenda at this time? Seeing no changes, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Commissioner Hyde, support by Commissioner Carto. Any further discussion? Roll call vote on the adoption of the agenda as issued.
Okay, Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes.
Okay, approved six zero.
All right, great. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, correspondence. I, let's see, I do want to note, we since I think the packet was published, we've received a series of email correspondences regarding Heron Farm from Daryl Depestal, Corey Hall, Jeff Kittendorf, Lila Sky. Pardon me if I'm mispronouncing some names. Julian Carey. And I have East Delhi, Julian Carey, Luis Groden, Christopher Hall, Peter Baker, John Grusuleski, Julie Janis, and Mike Lynn, Raymond Kelly, Corey Hall. In the packet is from the attorney James Fink. Also, if there are some, I think some commissioners posted some email reports from attending attending some site walkthroughs. And in addition, I want to report that I did have communications to coordinate the details of our Heron Farm site visit with Brian Heron. It was basically making sure we had Wi-Fi and way of vehicle access and parking. Any other commissioners want to know any correspondence that they have received? Okay, I see no hands raised. I believe both Commissioner Carto and Commissioner Hyde have a couple of things to report on their communications. Commissioner Hyde, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, thank you. I wanted to report that I had walked the property on East Delhi Road, which is before us tonight. And I was joined there by a number of the residents along the road as well as chiefhood. I have sent a correspondence to the Planning Commission. It would document for the record what we were, what we saw there. And basically, I was there in order to take inventory of the properties along there, see the terrain, see the grades. That was what I was mostly there for. Along the way, I did note, or I had noted for me, some markers that were placed probably by the representatives of the petitioner. And I used those as well as the terrain and the maps that were part of the submission to note where we were, where the various parts of the proposed road on the drawings existed on the landscape. So that we could get an idea of where things would be and how it would possibly look if it was made according to those drawings. I recognize they're preliminary.
Thank you. Commissioner Cotto.
I had mentioned during our last meeting that a group approached me with a series of questions. And I sent to all of you, but not in time to get into the packet, the response that I did to them. I checked with both the township attorney and with Mr. Luan to try to provide some information about the road variance process, the easement and how the process would work. My answers were based on trying to convey a sense of what the process was like and what some of the constraints of what we're actually considering in this application are. And I hope all of you received that.
Thank you very much. Any other correspondence reports from members of the commission? All right, seeing none. There are no presentations requested by the Planning Commission this evening, so we're going to move to public comment. And we'll entertain a motion to open public comment.
I moved to open public comment.
Moved by Commissioner Poor, supported by Commissioner Carto. To open public comment, roll call vote, please. Secretary Chang.
Holland.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Corto.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Chang, yes. Culbertson.
Yes.
Group six zero.
Opening public comment at seven oh nine. We will start with online participants. You can indicate that you would like to provide a comment by clicking the raise your hand button found at the bottom of your screen. If joining by computer or at the top of your screen, if joining by tablet, your microphone will be enabled one at a time until all online participants have had the opportunity to speak once. When you are unmuted by the host, you will see a dialogue box that says stay muted or unmute myself. Choose unmute myself if you wish to speak. Second, anyone who has phoned in will have the opportunity to speak. We'll ask for callers to speak by raising their hands by pressing star nine and then press star six to unmute. Callers must take turns until each call wishing to speak has had the opportunity to speak once. Comments shall be limited to three minutes unless you're representing an organization or group. And then the limit is five minutes. If a participant's comments result in disruptive behavior exceeding the time limit or intentionally interfering with the conduct of the meeting, the Open Meetings Act does allow for a person to be excluded from the meeting for a breach of the peace actually committed during the meeting. Procedure is I will first ask the host to mute you. And secondly, if you continue, I'll give you a warning that your behavior must cease or you be removed from the meeting. And with that, we'll start with our our public comment.
Okay, we have. Just going to start from the top of the list that I see. And the first person with his hand up is Daryl Depestal. And Mr. Depestal, I'm clicking the allowed to talk. And you should now be able to talk. The floor is yours.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Excellent. All right. So thanks. Hello, my name is Daryl Depestal. I'm at six eight two one Bridgewood Hills Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of the Bridgewood Hills Homeowners Association, including those not able to attend this meeting tonight. As such, I will use the five minutes to address the Planning Commission. So first, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for their time and attention in reference to the Heron Farms' conditional use application to which I'll be speaking to. As you, as you indicated, I have previously submitted a letter to the Planning Commission dated May eleventh of this month with several concerns. I've also submitted yesterday a petition to the Planning Commission with the names of the township residents opposing this conditional use permit. Specifically, what I intended to do was really petition those residents that are directly affected by the conditional use permit. And as such, the permit includes handwritten or electronic signatures of 100% of the residents within the property that abut or adjacent to Heron Farms. That petition is still opening and it has, in addition to those residents, some additional Scioto Township residents. I do have a few additional questions and comments I'd like to address further. And I'd like to start with the correction, as it's been noted in the packet for this evening. And the applicant has included in his presentation for tonight that it was stated that the event barn will have a minimum 700-foot buffer. However, according to the blueprints, the meeting packet on page forty-six, the proposed event barn measures, if the scale is correct, 250 feet from the east property line that abuts to the Bridgewood Hills neighborhood. And I bring this up because the concern is that, given the limited barn size and the potential for large groups of at least 150 people, the event barn being proposed, which has no open doors and no windows, and I wonder if there are plans for outdoor party tents or pavilions and where those may be located. The Agricultural Tourism Business Ordinance thirty-six one forty-nine states that a 200-foot open buffer shall be provided on all sides of the property that the agricultural tourism activities should not be allowed within this buffer area. So that's one point. I would also ask the Planning Commission to provide further clarification on the Scioto Township noise ordinance. The currently approved ornaments that I was able to locate publicly, including sections thirty-six three eleven, noise, and thirty-six three twelve vibration, appear to have some very different standards than what appears in the provisional code. The best I could tell, thirty-six one forty-nine points D eight A that are referenced in the applicant's proposal. So I'd like to know which is the correct ordinance that will be used to determine noise enforcement. What is the capacity allowed for the onsite events? The Planning Commission recommended limiting to 50 persons. However, the applicant believed this is too restrictive considering staff needs at harvest time, but ironically lists no more than seven employees are anticipated at peak times during harvest in his application. So it seems to be a little bit incongruent. And are there provisional plans for overflow parking that accommodate buses and limousines? I know this was an issue for for Cornman Farms. The applicant pledges that no events will be held until the first harvest of grapes grown on the property. But I was curious if this could be delineated further or further defined. Does that include harvesting one grape from one plant? According to section thirty-six one forty-nine point C one, states that winery selling products in the tasting room must contain at least 50% of crops or produce grown on site. And the same ordinance point C seven notes that income income from accessory activities need to represent less than 50% of the gross receipts on the farm. So how will this be achieved corresponding with the first harvest? And how will this harvest be linked to the proposed event space at that time? Overall, I think a winery is a great idea. However, if the proposed meeting space is harmonious with the rural character of the area, then why? Why are we discussing the need to limit capacity, number of events, and monitor sound? All of which are very difficult to monitor and enforce, and I think we know the answer. Additionally, it would be great if the applicant during his presentation tonight could explain the need for operating hours until nine PM Sunday through Thursday until 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays. Again, it seems out of rural character to have a commercial-like venue operating that late outside the city limits when most of the commercial businesses located within a mile are closed by nine PM on weekends. In closing, if approved, this conditional use permit is a zoning change that remains in perpetuity. This will change the rural character of the area forever. Mr. Heron may have every intention of adhering to the conditional use permit, but he could sell this land shortly after establishing an event barn, leaving new owners with different intentions. Unfortunately, Scioto Township doesn't have the strong enforcement procedures when it comes to these types of venues. And the conditional use permit simply becomes the line where the applications applicant starts to push to see what rules can be broken. With that, I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to remove you from being able to speak.
Mr. Luan, you're needed.
Doug, I think you've lost your phone connection.
Doug, if you can do the controls, which I can't, I can announce the next person, which would be Peter Baker. That's in my list. Mr. Baker.
Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
I will keep my comments short as I've spoken to the the road variance on Honey Creek and Delhi Road a couple of times now, but I wanted to call attention to a petition that was put together just this past Friday that I did submit to the Planning Commission email today, which only in the last couple of days has already garnered over 250 signatures to protect this piece of land. And implores Planning Commission and the Township Board to work towards a conservation easement and/or full-on protection under section thirty-six of the Township Code. The natural river setback regulation that protects Mill Creek, which in many areas is no more substantial than Honey Creek, as well as what the Huron River benefits from, keeping development at least 400 feet away from the banks of of these rivers. I would also implore the property owners and the applicants to consider the amount of cost, effort, and disruption that these developments are going to require. And the potential that it may not actually happen, given the difficulty of the lot and the efforts by many, many people in the township that want to protect it and look to instead gain potentially financially from the sale of the property to one of the many land conservancies or the county park system. There's a lot of interest in this unique area from those groups. And even the township has marked this area as one of the highest priority for environmental conservation. And between them and the other private parties in the area, I think a very reasonable, if not generous, offer could be gained and could provide an even more long-lasting legacy for Mr. Allen and others than any road or house ever could. If any of them would like to reach out to discuss those options, I'm happy to gather the interested parties. I can be reached at pete@elevatedworks.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next on the list is Bonnie Gorichen. Pardon me if I mispronounce your name.
Hello, hi.
Can you hear us?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. My name is Bonnie Gorichen. I live at twenty-four thirty East Delhi with my husband, John Gruselski. My comments are related to the private road variance nineteen zero zero one, which is on your agenda for new business later tonight. I wanted to call your attention to a letter submitted today to the Planning Commission, signed by thirteen of our neighbors, expressing concerns over the variance. The letter supplements concerns that were raised in the March twenty-second and April twenty-sixth public hearings on the variance and our our previous letters. We appreciate the Planning Commission's efforts to come to some sort of compromise between the applicant and the neighbors over the variance. At the last meeting, it was suggested by some members that Class C road variance may be possible in order to mitigate impacts resulting from road width. Our letter details why Class C is still an issue. We base our objections on research we have done with the various permitting agencies like the Washtenaw County Water Resources Commission and the Road Commission. We also have had discussions with Detroit Edison, who has expressed serious concerns with the road plan that would interfere with their line service by blocking full access to the easement and changes in grade posing safety risks for their linemen. Any road down the steep slopes east of the current driveway creates numerous concerns because of the fill, retaining walls, and sediment basins required, which create permanent structures at the T turnaround, which block access to property owners and utilities. Across the west end, we have flooding concerns because of the soils. We continue to believe that the development of the three residences directly above Honey Creek poses unacceptable risks to Honey Creek and its watershed. The development is also inconsistent with the Township master plan and efforts to put this property into a reserve need to be further explored. If the commission intends to grant the variance despite our objections, on page four of the letter, there is a list of conditions we suggest you consider. Some of these deal with the construction process itself and others address broader limitations on further development. Finally, we address the Township Attorney Letter dated May tenth about the legality, the easement for the new parcels. The letter expresses an opinion, but does not cite any supporting documentation such as deeds or provide any analysis or historical context. Does not consider whether their expansion of the roadway, which has been used as a driveway for almost 30 years from 10 feet to 16 or 22 feet for a Class C or B road overburdens the driveway and is inconsistent with its original use. We think the commission may be in legal jeopardy if you rely on this incomplete opinion to recommend the variance. We continue to urge you to table a decision on this variance until you complete your fact finding. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, I see Chris Hall. You should be able to unmute yourself, Chris.
Very sorry, Commissioner Culbertson.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you so much for your time and for my opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Hall, and I live with my wife Cory and our four children at twenty-five hundred East Delhi Road. And that is the first house that you come to when you go down the the private driveway coming from East Delhi. As you know, we've documented our concerns quite thoroughly, as Bonnie described. But I would just like to reiterate the concerns that we've expressed about the potential for flooding of home basements that are nearby, as well as the potential for water to undermine East Delhi Road. And I think my neighbor friend Ray Kelly has previously described the soil types around the driveway as being not very porous. And I can confirm that water sits for extended periods in our front yard very frequently after heavy rains. The soil testing that was done in two thousand nineteen is, in my opinion, inadequate. And I think it should be probably redone and done properly as a condition if the variance for the private road is granted. I think I mentioned before that the two guys that dug a hole in our front yard at that time in two thousand nineteen and cut the cable and phone line before they left didn't complete that task and they never came back to dig any of that holes. And so I think that for our parcel in particular, there has not been sufficient soil testing. And then other conditions that I think should be imposed, or at least you should consider imposing if the variance is to be granted, should include some alternative engineered solutions to mitigate such potential flooding as well as a some form of recourse in the event that there is future flooding which causes property damage. Those are my comments, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you as well. Next is Jill Depestal.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Jill Depestal, and I live at six eight two one Bridgewood Hills Drive with my husband and three children. I am opposed to the proposed conditional use permit for Heron Farms. In conjunction with my neighbors, I fail to see the connection between a vineyard and an event or party barn. We have lived in the Scioto Dexter area for 12-plus years. We particularly love this area for its small town charm, metro parks, Huron River, and natural surroundings. We recently built a home in Bridgewood Hills. Prior to purchasing our lot and building our house, we spent many years planning and researching the available properties in this area. We found that Bridgewood Hills met all of our needs. It is quiet, has beautiful views of the River Valley, and gives us some space while still being in close proximity to schools and activities. We have been here for just under two years and finally feel somewhat settled. It is hard to explain the discouragement we felt when we heard about the proposed conditional use permit for the Heron Farms event barn. It was as though a rug had been pulled out from under us. This proposed event barn would basically be in our backyard. I have been looking forward to some quiet summer evenings on my back patio. Listening to other people's parties was not what I had in mind. We were well aware that the land behind us was zoned for agricultural use, and we certainly wouldn't be opposed to a small vineyard. An event barn, however, does not fit with the rural character of this area, nor does it seem necessary to the functioning of a small vineyard. We all know that the reputation of event party barns haven't been good in this area for multiple reasons. Increased traffic, noise, and other disturbances are common problems and cause for frequent complaints. Complaints that are often ignored or poorly managed, regulations that are not followed. Knowing this, why would we consider adding another, especially one that would sit close to multiple residences? I am very disappointing, very disappointed that this is being considered. I am wondering what will happen to my property value should this get approved. I am wondering about the noise I will hear from my back patio when I want to enjoy some peace and quiet on a nice summer evening. I have particular concerns about the noise level of large groups outside. When the the Planning Commission was out here to do sound testing a couple of weeks ago, I could hear the small group talking out in the woods behind our house. What would a large group of people talking, laughing, singing, and yelling sound like? That was not tested. In conclusion, this is a big decision that is being made for many surrounding residents who are opposed to the proposal. Hopefully, you hear each and every one of our voices and consider our concerns. I want to be sure that the peaceful, natural character natural character area of this area is preserved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Ken Koenig.
Good evening. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I reside at twenty-seven forty-eight Hickory Ridge Court. And I am asking, well, talking to you tonight in regards to the Heron Farms Vineyard and potential party barn. We share our property line with them. We are on the western the western property line that abuts all the way to their land. We have a couple of concerns. We're twenty-seven year, I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of Scioto Township and the Dexter community. I'm also an administrator at Dexter Community Schools. My wife is a longtime Dexter, lifetime Dexter resident where we've raised a family and we found this nice piece of land out here and built our dream home. As our concern comes up with this, I am not opposed to the agricultural piece of this idea at all. But I am opposed to the potential noise, the increased traffic, as well as, you know, potentially our road right now being turned, being used as a turnaround for the traffic that comes in and out of the party barn or out of the property. So we would, we oppose the idea of this, even though we do want to support local agricultural improvements to the area, but not at the cost of losing the peace and quiet and the great rural feel that we have. the peace and quiet and the great rural feel that we have in and around our area. So please take our concerns under consideration when when discussing the situation happening at Heron Farms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Tom Sorenson.
Good evening. My name is Tom Sorenson and I live at twenty-three eighty East Adelhi. My home is at the end of the current private drive that is requesting the PRV nineteen zero zero one. I've lived at this location for thirty years. I hope that the planning commission has received and read the letter from the concerned neighbors that are going to be impacted if this variance is approved. Mine and one other residence will be impacted substantially with the proposed new road running directly through our front yards within sixty-five feet of our homes. I am not naive in thinking there would never be the potential for development, but would be disappointed if this extremely obtrusive and environmentally impactful project was approved. Besides the visual impact to the surrounding rural area, there would be a substantial loss of mature trees and the addition of restrictive barriers, in example, retaining walls. Impacting wildlife. I understand the applicant's desire to live in such a beautiful area, but don't believe those who have built here prior should suffer such hardship and sacrifice to allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, John Ames.
Hi, my name is John Ames. I live at twenty-two fifty-eight Oxbow Court. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Depestal's in Bridgewood Hills and I appreciate the diligence of everybody that was out at the the sound hearings at Heron Farms. And I'm just voicing my opposition to this. You know, my, I, you know, I won't repeat all the things that Daryl and Jill and others have said about this, but you know, when we were out there and we were right at Dexter Ann Arbor Road, I mean, there's a lot of sound traffic right now just on that corridor. And, you know, my, my bigger question to the township and the committee is is this really the right place for a business like this that's going to increase even more traffic, let alone the whether or not the sound testing that was done passed or didn't pass. I think it's a bigger question that people have asked, have been asking about, you know, what is the nature of this corridor here? And if you have a hundred percent of the neighbors saying, hey, I don't, I don't really want this. And, you know, I think you, you know, hopefully you hear us loud and clear on this. And I think everybody agrees that having a small business is a great thing, but it's the question of what type of business do we want to have there and is that the right place for it? So I just leave you with that comment and, and, you know, have you think about that piece versus just all the, all the committee, all the sound testing info. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Jeff Harshy.
Hello, I'm Jeff Harshy. I'm with M A V D. We're the developer of the property next to the proposed Heron Farms. In total, M A V D is seventy acres. Our Bridgewood Hills development has twelve home sites on fifty acres with twenty-five acres of dedicated open area. It is planned and executed to be harmonious with the character of the land in accordance with Sio Township ordinances with the expectation and in reliance that adjacent owners would likewise develop the land harmoniously. I'm also a Sio Township resident. Grapes in a vineyard could add to the character of the land and be very harmonious. Legitimately locally grown and produced wine could be an amenity, but that's not what is proposed. The nature of this rural ag area is that the people rise in the morning and sleep at night. Day is light with tractors, people, cars and trucks. Night is dark with stars, wind, crickets, frogs and nature. Not screaming, singing amplified music and lights that are needed to limit liquor liability. The very fact that a complicated sound study was completed by a sound engineer and should at the very least be studied by another sound engineer to see if the assumptions made make sense means that this is not harmonious with the area. In the ordinance, several ancillary agriculturally related uses are mentioned. Petting farms, nature trails, et cetera. These are daylight activities with appeal to people who live in the area. The event barn is a nighttime use for people who don't live in the area with amplified music, lights, cars and traffic. They're there for one night and some will get loud and wild, drunk and crazy. Ask them to quiet down, they don't care. The folks who want to enjoy the stars, wind, frogs and crickets who move there for those very reasons will have no choice but to tolerate every new DJ and wedding that decides their fun trumps the character of Sio Township. The applicant makes several questionable assumptions related to the sound attenuation of the barn enclosure. If any, excuse me, if any prove not to be valid, the harmonious nature of the vineyard is ruined. The fire pit evenings in adjacent areas is sabotaged and the use runs with the land. But here's the kicker. If any of these premises are faulty, if a bad DJ persistently cranks the music, a car leaving the wedding jams the music on ten, the township has no enforcement mechanism. It is already a demonstrated problem at the Fruity Farm. It is a problem at Corman Farms. It was a problem at Cottonwood Barn in Webster Township. Little comfort is afforded by the applicant currently residing on the property. The use runs with the land. They can move tomorrow and just might with an event barn approved for use. When Brian Hereon first acquired this land, he called me. It was a nice gesture, even though he was just asking to use the Bridgewood Hills roads to access the rear portion of his newly acquired land. He was going to build his home there, he said. I was not able to accommodate his use of the roads. Sadly, when he decided to pursue this use, he did not contact me, did not contact any neighbors, did not have any meetings to hear the issues that might arise. Last week, when my office emailed him for a copy of the sound study, he did not reply. Instead, we've tried, we tried to follow the public notices and speak at this forum. I hope the planning commissioners hear us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Anne Kittendorf.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Thank you so much for taking my comments tonight. My name is Anne Kittendorf and I reside at twenty-two eighty-seven Hillside Court, which is located within the Bridgewood Hills Development. I'm a strong, I am in strong opposition to the proposed conditional use permit for Heron Farms and agree with all the points that have been raised by others during this public comment. In general, I also do not have an issue with the concept of a vineyard or of a tasting room that is open during normal business hours so that the public can sample and purchase locally crafted wines. However, I find it difficult to understand the need for wine tasting brewery openings until eleven P M. Unless the intent is to operate as what is currently referred to as locally as a party barn. If this is in fact the case, have the planning commissioners considered how operating a party barn is complimentary, an accessory to a vineyard? Is it necessary to host wedding receptions, birthday parties, corporate and other events in order to promote and sell wine? I hope you would agree that the answer is no. Moreover, the commissioner, have the commissioners considered how this operation would impact the adjacent residential properties that border Heron Farms? Would it, would it do to the enjoyment of outdoor living spaces and would that affect property values? The answers to these questions can be easily found by reviewing the multiple complaints throughout the years regarding the Misty Farms and other local operations. I encourage each of you to seriously consider the continual problems that these neighbors have faced without resolution from the township before approving additional agritourism conditional use permits, whether it be here in farms or otherwise. Given the location of my home relative to the proposed operation, I am particularly concerned about ordinance enforcement, especially as it relates to noise. While the township's agritourism business ordinance specifies maximum noise levels at property lines, it is eventually, it is an eventuality that these levels will be violated at some point during business operations. At ten P M on a Friday night, who do the neighbors notify about loud music coming from a quote wine tasting room? And what is the penalty when there is a violation? Living in the Huron River Valley, I can attest how sound travels in this area. We hear the train from over a mile away at Zeeb and again in downtown Dexter. On a clear night, we can hear the train moving even prior to the train whistle. We hear dogs barking at Dexter here on Metro Park about a half a mile away and motorcycles as they go along the Huron River Drive. These noises, however, are temporary, short-lived and mostly in the daytime. Possibly hearing the rhythmic but indecipherable drumming and bass of a band or a DJ on weeknights in the summer from my quiet, beautiful porch is not how I envision a relaxing Friday night. Again, based on the cumulative issues surrounding party barns in the area, it seems that the township has not fully figured out how to monitor and address noise concerns. And I fear that the ability for noise to travel along the valley will, valley will be neglected in this discussion. Tonight, I respectfully ask that the planning commission does not approve the requested conditional use permit for Heron Farms. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Kittendorf.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Jeff Kittendorf and I live at twenty-two eighty-seven Hillside Court in Bridgewood Hills, along with my wife Anne and my two children. I am in opposition of the requested conditional use permit for Heron Farms. I am particularly concerned about the elevated noise pollution infiltrating our neighborhood, especially during large weekend events that will negatively impact our enjoyment of outdoor living spaces. To better understand the potential of elevated noise in our community, excuse me, our HOA has asked Memtech Acoustical to evaluate the studies and reports generated by Soundscape Engineering at the behest of the Herons. Memtech has reviewed the Soundscape studies and have summarized their analysis and concerns in a memo, which I forwarded to the planning commission yesterday. I would like to use the remainder of my time to read that memo for the public record. Dear Planning Committee, per the request of Bridgewood Hills Homeowners Association, we have reviewed the Heron Farms organized meeting space conditional use permit and the acoustical reports submitted by Soundscape Engineering dated October twenty-eight, twenty-twenty and February seventeen, twenty-one. We have subsequently identified a few key concerns relative to the potential impact of noise emanating from the proposed facility. These concerns are briefly summarized as follows. One, the Soundscape report references a sixty-five decibel maximum ordinance level for noise at the subject property line. However, we have been unable to locate a publicly available and approved criteria stating this requirement and referencing the metrics to be used to acquire the noise data, time weighted average, frequency weighting, et cetera. Without adequate definitions, the required measurement process, the results can vary significantly. The vast majority of Michigan communities define unique day and night noise limits to compensate for the higher perception of nuisance noise during quieter evening hours. Without some clarity on this issue, it becomes difficult to determine what will be legally acceptable to the community. As an example, Dexter Township's noise criteria is considerably more stringent and better defined with a nocturnal limit of fifty-five D B A time weighted average. Two, the acoustic study did not take into account additional noise resulting from activities outside the facility. Vehicle traffic, loud conversations should be considered to the overall noise model. Vehicle traffic, sorry, typical localized noise levels for these types of activities range from approximately seventy to seventy-five D B A during active periods with transient peaks of well over ninety. Three, the subjective sound study, which is performed with music played outdoors through speakers at a level of sixty-four D B A requires further clarification supporting info for an independent analysis. The specific data and engineering assumptions for the acoustic prediction models, input parameters and the sound sources setup calibration methods for the playback study have not been provided. Based on previous experiences, a thirty D B A broadband attenuation estimate for the barn is considerably higher than we would expect, especially when considering low frequency effects in wooden structures. Further information is needed to corroborate the output levels and the frequency content of the playback speakers were appropriate to simulate the conditions when ninety-plus D B A rhythmic music is being played through a sound system inside a large and potentially reverberant resident building. Four, details of the design and construction of the building have not been provided. The proposed use of sound insulating panels and thermally insulated windows are stated, but the acoustic properties of these materials are not specified. Please note, there is no a priori assumption that the noise from the new facility would be unacceptable, nor do these concerns intend to negate the data conclusions of the Soundscape study. However, there are a number of outstanding questions regarding the definition of community standards and the supporting data methods of the acoustic study, which must be addressed to in order, in order to independently verify an acceptable noise outcome for the surrounding community. As an example, we recently reviewed a situation in North Carolina wherein the base thumping of an interior sound system at an enclosed conference center could clearly be heard in a rural setting twenty-two hundred feet away. It is our recommendation that clarification of the community noise criteria and additional supporting information be provided to allow an independent evaluation to proceed. Based on this Memtech analysis, our homeowners association and neighbors feel it is prudent, it is prudent for the planning commission to reject the requested conditional use permit or at the very least table this issue so that more robust and meaningful analyses of noise pollution can be performed. And with that, I will thank you for my, for allowing me to speak and that's all.
Thank you. Next, I have Gillian Carey. Thank you. Next, I have Gillian Carey. Thank you. Kimberly Shirt.
Can you hear me?
Yes. You don't sound like Kimberly about.
No, I'm Neil Shirt.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for my time and just want to say we oppose the event barn due to consistencies in the proposal as other people have brought up. And as well as the increased noise and light pollution. Sorry, should start off, I'm 6541 Dexter and Arbor Road, right across the street. And as far as the noise and light pollution go, you know, Friday night over here, you can hear the Dexter band playing at the football field and the announcer's going. But sound travels. And I also want to just bring up the extended traffic that would bring up on our busy road. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy.
Screwed up.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. My name's Tracy Bradish and I live at 2249 Morrison Road. So I'm just the other side of Bridgewood Hills from where Heron Farms is located. Thank you very much for the care and attention that you have given to this project. I very much appreciate it. I agree with all of the Bridgewood Hills and my other neighbors like Neil Shirt, who have expressed some concerns. I lived through the Bridgewood Hills proposal and development and construction as a neighbor intimately affected by it, and I have to say it was a process that was quite delightful because M A B D envisioned and appreciated and enhanced and, in fact, celebrated the uniqueness of this area and why people came here. And the resulting Bridgewood Hills development has been a delightful addition to the neighborhood that I moved to 25 years ago. I'm not quite sure that Heron Farms is there yet. And so in its current form, I'm not supportive of the conditional use. I'm not convinced that this particular proposal is the best use of conditional use for Scioto Township in terms of how it wants to keep its character. I share the concerns that Darrell and Darrell DePessel and Jeff Kittendorf shared about the plausity of information regarding the utility of the relationship between accessory use and primary use of a vineyard and a barn, an event tasting facility. So I'm not prepared to support this, even as I want to support my kind of next-door neighbors or next-to-next-door neighbors. I don't think they're there yet, and I think it's a little premature, and I think it would be a dangerous slippery slope for the township to approve based on the uncertainty of the future of this project as proposed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I see, Doug, I see a phone that's, the last four digits are 4997, but I can't tell if they've raised their hand or not. That would be a star.
That's me.
That's you? Okay, good. All right. I don't see anyone who has, let's see, didn't Michelle Cody speak? I see a couple more hands getting raised here.
Yeah, there's a few more coming up.
Yep.
But Michael Cody will bring them.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Michelle Cody and I reside. It happens all the time. And I reside at 4620 Stein Road and have been a 35-year resident here, and I love it. I do wonder, and my primary question is, what is the future of Scioto Township? It seems that it's either development or rural charm and farms and open spaces preserved for nature, which is why I moved here. I thought the Jackson Road corridor was purposely planned to keep development to that specific area. And as prior speakers have mentioned, I do agree with the noise that travels surprisingly far and how noise infringes on the peace and tranquility that many of us residents treasure. And I have to wonder, is the two-and-a-half-acre residential lot minimum still in effect? It was at the time I built my home. But it does create lovely landscapes and privacy, and many of us, as have spoken prior to myself, certainly have been great, grateful and happy to have the privacy and nature. The whole reason many of us bought and built here is for that. The noise pollution is real and insidious. Enforcement appears to be unavailable, at least at this time, in the way things are written. So I do close with my initial question is, is it development by developers who won't even live here? And I go beyond just the party barn thing, which I'm not in favor of at all. I support the residents who have spoken quite eloquently on their own behalf and on my behalf as well. And I, or are we preserving and protecting and defending nature? This is a beautiful township, and it seems to be on a faster track to development in recent years. And so I'm in support of go slow, be very careful, and let's preserve what we have. And so I support, I oppose the party barn and I support noise ordinances being able to be enforced if that has to be done so. So thank you very much for listening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Michelle. John Oberg.
Hi, this is Joyce, not John, but I haven't prepared anything to say tonight to really add value to the meeting, though I do want to just show my support for my neighbors and my friends. And we have lived here since 2005, and we've seen a big change in Scioto Township since that time and not a change that we're necessarily pleased with. So we're hoping that whatever agricultural component of Scioto Township remains can be preserved. Thank you.
Joyce, could you state your address, please, for the record?
6830 Dexter and Arbor Road.
Thank you very much. Right. Julie, and please let me know how to pronounce your last name.
Julie, if you can unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Julie Janis. Much simpler than the spelling to pronounce. Thank you for continuing to hear commentary on the East Delhi private road variance. I live at 2360 East Delhi, and I'm the property owner adjacent to the first thousand feet of the private drive that is proposed to be converted to currently either a Class B or possibly a C or possibly an A road. I'm not going to add a lot of repetition. We've had a lot of opportunity to contribute comments and along with my neighbors. We appreciate you hearing those. I do support the letter that was sent this morning requesting a master plan because I think the road to nowhere is what we're looking at right now. And that road is either appropriate or not appropriate, and it's a little hard to tell because we don't know exactly what the plan is expected to be. I admit, yes, there are documents, but I don't believe any of those are firm documents that assure us that the road being built is the appropriate road. I do want to comment on a couple of things that came out in the letter from Jim Fink, which I appreciate was added to the packet at the end of the week last week. Specifically, I think there's a phrase used in the letter and elsewhere with the commission in prior meetings that we know that the owner of the dominant parcel cannot impose new or additional burden on the surveying parcels beyond what was originally contemplated. And I think the question therein is, what was originally contemplated? I think we just heard Tom Sorenson speak that he's been on the property for 30 years. I find it hard to imagine, although I haven't asked Tom myself, did he envision sediment ponds in his front yard? Did he envision a road that was at the time a private driveway moving into his yard and eroding what trees and lawn he had? I think that's a fair question at this point because while I'm not unsupportive of ongoing development in the community, I do think the township has set out a plan to be conservative in its growth to maximize natural features, to protect the watershed. And these questions remain open while the variance sits in front of us. I also would add that the private drive ordinance, excuse me, I have a technical problem here. The what one would anticipate or expect from an easement when they purchase property is highly variable. What you look at when you purchase property is what's in front of you. And if you see a 20-foot or a 10-foot wide road, it's very hard to imagine that there would be something significantly different brought in. But I do ask the commission to consider that point. The other point I want to raise very briefly is that the maintenance agreement that the neighbors would be party to currently as proposed was equalizing the costs across all properties. And I think for a neighborly position to start out, it would be more appropriate to what are the amounts of the road that each party will use? What are the costs associated with using that part of the road? Because as we look at the landscape, we see the last 800 feet that's being added to the existing road. It will be extremely expensive. Retaining walls, continued drainage issues are significant. So simply apportioning the cost of the road dividing by households is somewhat punitive to those living near East Delhi. Dividing that total cost of the road through the construction period as well as after construction is still punitive to the road users who currently have access to their homes. So while I realize the commission is not speculating on or opining on the actual road maintenance agreement tonight, I do understand that road maintenance agreement is part of what is expected when a variance is approved. And I find that the way the road is proposed and the maintenance agreement is proposed, I find it hard to imagine anyone would participate in signing that. So I would like to hear if it's feasible for the commission to speak to it. If that agreement is required before approving the variance, it would be good to know if procedurally that is true. Those are my comments, and I appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. All right. I don't see anyone who has not spoken. Jonathan Greenberg.
Hi, this is Jonathan Greenberg, 6250 Park Road, soon to be of a new address as the neighborhood actually hooks us up to the east of our property. I am here solely to express solidarity with my neighbors and express strong opposition to any more party barns or the road to nowhere in our township. Both poorly conceived ideas, both so many negative downsides that have been covered today. I'm here to say, as someone who sacrificed significant financial gain to preserve five acres in the middle of urban sprawl, I am completely understanding why my neighbors want the quiet, want the sounds of the crickets and the frogs. And with that, I thank you for your time. Oh, and that's good. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Roger Ladronka.
Mr. Ladronka, if you could unmute yourself. You are still muted, so there's a button that should be at the bottom of your screen to unmute yourself, Mr. Ladronka.
Doug, why don't you keep Roger up, and we'll go to Sarah Shirt and hopefully come back.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Sarah Shirt, and I reside at 5074 John Holmes Road with my husband Raphael Barron. And I don't want to take a lot of time tonight to echo all the great points that have been already made, but simply wanted to, as it was eloquently put by a previous commenter, to just stand in solidarity with other Scioto Township residents and neighbors opposing the Heron Farms conditional proposal, excuse me. And as I said, I didn't want to take up any more time because brilliant points have already been made on that. Just wanted to put a voice to my petition signature. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roger, are you able to unmute yourself at this point?
So it looks like we've got, is Michelle Cody, has she already spoken?
Yes.
Was she just there?
Yeah, so I think everyone has spoken that had a hand raised. Commissioner Coto?
I wonder if we might check whether there's another person in the household who has raised the hand on the same account.
Oh. That could be. Let's move on to Gary Cade. And if there is someone, I think all hands are down right now. So if there is someone on the same account from the household who would like to speak, well, go ahead and raise your hand because we do want to give opportunity to all who want to speak. We'll proceed with Gary Cade at this point.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question. I had planned on talking when the Red Hawk Lane case actually comes up. I'm not clear that, you know, I think that's appropriately when I want to speak, but I just want to make sure there is an opportunity during that time.
Mr. Cade, yeah, there is, public comment would be the appropriate time, which is now because we had already had the public hearing for that, so this.
He's one of the applicant.
Thanks. Yeah, we will have an opportunity for the applicant to speak after the public comment.
I just thank you. Thank you, Jane. I just wanted to be.
Sorry, I forgot.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else from the same household that would like to make a comment? Please raise your hand. I see none. Do we have any that have indicated raising their hand? Anyone on their phone? We only have you on the phone, right? Oh, we have Becky Leeson.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Go ahead, Becky. Hi, this is Becky Cleason. I live at 3964 Delhi Glen Lane, and I am calling, just commenting in regards to the East Delhi Road. And I am just calling to comment that I also agree with having a master plan in order to approve a variance. I have heard different things. I've read everything I can on this, and I don't feel that approving something without all of those details is really helping anyone in the neighborhood. We don't really know what this road is going to. And having different sources of information really is giving us different sides to who knows where it's going. So I am just putting that down. Our entire backyard opens up to both Red Hawk Lane and this new proposed road. We are, I guess, behind Tom's house. Tom's house, his front of his house faces the back of our house, so we can see all of both levels. And without a master plan, it's really hard to even understand wh- what is going to happen. So that's just my comment. And so I'm opposed to approving anything at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Pattinson.
Thank you. Rob Pattinson, 500 North Zeeb. Relating to the East Delhi, I read through the 200 and some page packet tonight, and I don't see any new information submitted to the planning commission. There were a lot of questions asked at the last meeting of the applicant, and I don't see any new information provided in this current package. Last time, they agreed to build six or less homes. And I don't see how the property has been proposed to be subdivided. Like the previous commenter said, there doesn't seem to be a a master plan submitted. They want to do this piecemeal, which I'm very uncomfortable with. The proposed road is built on a watershed, and watersheds move. And this hill that goes down towards Honey Creek is just like the Huron River Drive watershed, and we all know how much Huron River Drive needs to be repaired. This is a road that's going to have to have some sort of extremely substantial base that won't deteriorate, because otherwise, as that watershed moves, that road is going to fall apart. Miller Road has been closed for a year because the bridge over on Miller Road over Honey Creek appears to have been more complicated than they thought, and they've had to reengineer some aspects of it. And that just shows how complicated this watershed issue is. And relating to the original, the landowner, this property already has a driveway on it going from Wagner Road to five homes, 2689, 2691, 2693, 2695, and 2697 North Wagner. So this is a piece of property that already has a driveway on it, and now they want to create a road through other people's property for a different access, and it just doesn't seem fair. Thank you. I'm done.
Hey, thank you. Kathleen Ladronka.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Roger Ladronka. My wife and I, Kathleen, live at 2697 North Wagner Road. And I would just like to voice our opposition to both of these proposals, these variances. The party barn surprises me. That is just not fit for this area on the road, our Dexter Road. It's very difficult at certain times to turn onto Dexter Road from Morrison and other roads in that stretch because of traffic. And with the township having had Jackson Road created to attract businesses, it just seems like putting a party barn just outside the city limits of Dexter is a bad idea. It doesn't fit the area. And it's just, it's not something that seems like more than a pipe dream when you have wine tasting mentioned that there's no grapes growing at all yet. So how how far down the road are we looking for that? And then as far as the private lane variance, it seems like someone asked for a variance on in the same particular easement, which is just a Detroit Edison easement, just a couple of years back, just another property owner that has landlocked property back along Honey Creek, which they probably knew was landlocked when they bought it. That two-track easement is not suitable for a road. The land should not be developed because it's, it's just too beautiful. It's natural. It should be kept as parkland. Something like this is very rare so close to the city of Ann Arbor. And it almost seems untouched back there. Putting a road back there, septic fields, utilities, everything, all the trees that will have to be cut down, it's just going to destroy the nature of that area. If there's any options to create parkland or nature or area back there in the future, let's not make this a, you know, you don't know what you got till it's gone moment and give it away. But the party barn also, it just seems like a bad idea. You, if you change that from agricultural to some other kind of commercial use, then anything can happen somewhere down the road. My wife and I haven't lived here for over 23 years. In Scioto Township, really appreciate the rural qualities of the area, and we wish it would stay that way. Keep the businesses on Jackson Road and limit the development, and let's try to keep the area as natural as possible. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for persevering, Roger. All right. I'm going to check, but I don't see anyone else. Doug, do you see anyone else by phone?
I do not, no.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Moore and supported by Commissioner Hyde to close public comment. Any discussion? Seeing none, Secretary Chang, do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Coteau.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes.
Okay. We're closed.
We're closing public comment at 8:20. And we're moving on to our our business session. We have no advertised public hearings, and so we're coming to unfinished business. Conditional use number 20002, Heron Farms, an agricultural, commercial tourism business. So, Mr. Luan, do you want to just, oh, I guess we should hear from the applicant if there's some additional information or they want to address anything, then we'll. Oh, I'm sorry. We we do need to do Mr. Luan first, if you have anything that you want to comment at this point.
No, I I would, I I guess I'd like to hear what the applicant, kind of them to go over what, you know, what new they've provided since the last time they're here. And then I can, I would go over my comments after that. I I'd like to hear the applicant first.
Okay, great. All right. So are either of the Herons here?
Yes, we're here. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Awesome. Thank you so much for your time. I'm going to try to be short because I appreciate that you all took the time to come out and visit the property and get a feel for what we're trying to accomplish. And I'm just going to jump right in first to the changes as Doug requested. So let me just pull up my notes here. So this would be our third time in front of the planning commission, the first time last year, and then the previous one. And the changes that we've come back with, A is a reduction of the number of parking spots down to 35. B is that we would have the sound engineering firm retained for the duration of the project, you know, through full construction. I I hope you could see by our public meeting, we were very open to feedback, suggestions, and trying to find ways to make sure that we're not a nuisance. And C and R changes was we have submitted proposed conditions for use. And those conditions would be that we would not have any events until the first harvest of grapes are grown on the property. And I did hear the question, is it one grape? Is it, is it 100 grapes? So by the definition of the ordinance, we would have to have 50% of our our wine would be locally sourced and and less than 50% of the revenue would be from the tasting room. Now, obviously, selling the wine would be an agricultural revenue. So it's it's likely three years, you know, maybe four if if the first harvest comes later. It depends on when we plant, too. You know, we're not planning to plant until we have this process established. And I know that was also a question, why, why now? I I'm a firm believer in being upfront with your intentions. And we've already agreed that a condition of use for the tasting room would be a vineyard. So, you know, if you approved us on those conditions, we wouldn't have a tasting room without a vineyard. So they absolutely would go together. The planting of grapes is unfortunately very expensive and something that we don't think a vineyard is going to be sustainable without a local tasting room. And in our first planning commission meeting, we had Holly from Sand Hill Cranes, a local winery, speak about that. I know that was a different group, but she was very busy, so we didn't want to bring her back. So nothing until the first harvest, and then a limit of five events per year of what we would call a large event, which would be 100 or more people. Now, just to be fair, we already have a fireworks party every year, which we invite our neighbors to, which would be one of those five. So we're asking for four events per year that would be considered a large event, and it's detailed in our submission. Then what we would propose is every year a review by the township. Did we meet our conditions of use? If we didn't meet them, the township would have the right to reduce them by five per year, which would effectively take us to zero. Or we would have the right to request to go up by five if there aren't neighborhood complaints, if it's a good use within the land. So in the review process, we detail that we would provide property line sound recordings for each event. And there's plenty of technology now where we can have 24/7 sound monitoring. So that would be included. We would set up a line for our neighbors to record complaints, which we would love to respond to if we hear any of them, but that would also be available for the township. And then, you know, we wouldn't have more than one per week at maximum. Again, we only have five per year. And one of the challenges that we're facing here is that we're really being compared to an event barn. And if you think about an event barn, it's a, it's a wedding venue. You know, they operate sometimes twice per week, maybe up to 50 or 60 times per year, and it's for weddings. You guys saw the barn. It's a, when when the bathrooms are at, it'll be 2,300 square feet, so about the size of a house, you know, 35 parking spots in grass. You know, there's really not, it's not a suitable site for a wedding, but it would be great for a tasting room so we could sell some wine. So our, those are our conditions that we're proposing, basically not until it's harvested, five events per year, and then a mechanism to go up or down based on the feedback that the city receives from the community. And the last one that we would ask for is that the Fourth of July party, which we've already had, and we always seek permission from Scioto for commercial fireworks, be excluded from the sound requirements, and we do invite our neighbors to that. So those, those are our proposed conditions. The only other thing I'd just like to say is, you know, I had a couple of responses to comments and questions. We had a a comment about the planning commission recommending that we limit it to 50. And through my notes, I had that a commissioner did ask that question in a meeting from 2020, but it wasn't a recommendation, it was just a question. And we reached out to other vineyards to find out, you know, is 50 manageable for a harvest? And and the feedback we got was that wasn't. We talked about the the farm operation. I am happy to provide the tax returns for Heron Farms to the planning commission, but I'd like to do that under an agreed upon confidentiality agreement, so it's not public information. But we'd be happy to share that. So I think that's it. Like I said, it's just kind of a different thing, and we understand the concern. We try to be very open with our neighbors. You know, the sound, you know, everybody kind of went out and heard it, and we understand that may not be entirely what is reality, because things on plan aren't always the same on paper as they are in real life. But we'd like you to just understand that we're trying to work, you know, harmoniously, and we think that this is something that can be achieved. So we we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Luan.
Okay. Thank you. So our our review, our full review is dated March 11th. That's the last time we did a review, and I think there was a, we haven't done a full review after that because there, the applicant was trying to set up the noise, the noise meeting on site. So in your packet is our March 11th analysis. We also provided a memo dated May 19th. That memo gives a short rehash of of the events of, you know, to date what's what's happened. This was first heard for a public hearing. Their public hearing was was held December 14th by the planning commission. This actually goes back to last summer, some early discussions about this project, but there was a public hearing on December 14th. And a number of concerns were raised by residents. The applicant tried to address some of those concerns in their latest submission, as well as having the onsite noise meeting that was held last week or maybe two weeks ago at this point. And back in December, the planning commission tabled the request to allow the applicant to respond to comments that they they had received. The applicant did re-provide their new, their new plan was dated February 22nd, so they did try to respond to some of those things. And as I said, there was a special meeting onsite with the applicant. So our review that that the planning commission has received, again, dated March 11th, is 15 pages, 14 and a half pages long. And I'm, because we're all very familiar with this project, I'm not going to go through this report page by page. I I will assume the planning commission has read this report, and I would, I would prefer to respond to questions that you might have based on this report. I will, however, go over the the list of items that we had that should be addressed. And our our comment here is that should the planning commission want to pursue this request, the following items will need to be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission prior to a recommendation to the township board. And and just to remind everyone else on that point, this is a special land use. And as such, the planning commission, like like most approvals of the planning commission, is a recom- is a recommendation only to the township board. So regardless of the action of the planning commission, it could be an approval or denial, that recommendation would still go to the township board for a final decision. So this is not, for those of you who are here for this item tonight, this is, this is not the only stop of of this project. This will be going on to the township board after a recommendation is made by the planning commission. So with with regard to the items that would need to Um, so with with regard to the items that uh would need to be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission, um, the first, and this is, this is a significant item that I heard from, you know, heard uh, uh, comments from the public and one that we've raised and one that I think the applicant has tried to address, um, although is is really, I I think the key issue here. And that is um whether this organized meeting space um is complimentary and accessory to the primary agricultural use of the property. So you know, this this whole section of the zoning ordinance that allows uh agricultural, commercial uses, this section is intended to allow uh people who are who are practicing agriculture to have another uh, another funding source or another income source for their properties, um, essentially so they don't have to sell the farm uh and and divide it up into properties. And so this was really set up, it was really to to set up for for that purpose. Um, you know, to to allow the kind of use and and to allow the things that we do talk about in our master plan, you know, like the preservation of agricultural property, the preservation of farming. And so this was a, this was intended to allow, you know, one, to meet the intent of the master plan, two, promote agriculture, promote farming, and then allow farmers to actually do that. And um, you know, not have to fragment the property and sell it into lots or make a subdivision or parcel it off. So in one sense, what the applicant is proposing to do is exactly what the the planning commission has has intended and and tried to promote in the master plan for many years. Um, the question is, in this particular case, is is the 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 event venue or the organized meeting space complimentary and accessory to the primary agricultural use? And as we've heard, you know, right now, there the primary agricultural use, which would be the growing of grapes, has not begun yet. So um, the applicant has proposed some conditions to try to address that, and that is that none of these events could take place until after a first harvest of grapes. Um, but that that's an open question. This is, this is a question um that the planning commission is going to have to talk uh out in your deliberation and perhaps ask some questions, a further clarification and questions of the applicant. Um, but again, I think of of many of the questions that I have, you know, that is, that is one of the uh, one of the biggest, um, or if not the biggest. Our second question is um, uh, for the applicant to address um some of the other clarification issues that I had in my report. And those clarification questions are found on page three of the report, and they're bulleted towards the end of that page. Um, and the applicant has our report and and these are uh, as as was mentioned, when the applicant did its short presentation, they are proposing to reduce parking spaces. Um, and we, so we had wondered if they're reducing parking spaces, why were they not reducing the capacity of the organized meeting space? So if they reduce the parking spaces to thirty-five, um, you know, they're, they have proposed this hundred and fifty person capacity. Um, it sounds like the, it sounds like the applicant is not intending for this to be a wedding venue, an every week wedding venue. Um, however, that's not clear. And this, I think this is a a key point that's muddying the waters here. Is this a every week wedding venue with a hundred and fifty people that are gonna be there all the time? Or do they need a hundred and fifty people for a a a wine event that happens once a year? I mean, that that's another key issue has to do with the number of, the number of people and why a hundred and fifty. Um, you know, pretty much if we allow a hundred and fifty for five events and then that starts to ramp up, um, it it's it, the way this is written, the way I see it is it could occur every single week. And it doesn't sound like that's what the applicant wants, but I think we would that, that's a key issue that needs additional clarification. Um, the applicant did mention how long they believed it would take. The one of my other questions was, you know, how long is it gonna take uh once the grapes are planted for the first harvest? They uh, the applicant just mentioned, Mr. Heron just mentioned uh three to four years. So that being the case, we would expect no events for three to four years until the first harvest. Um, so the other question that would follow that question is, you know, uh, you know, we would have to, if if the planning commission and township board were willing to accept uh the conditions the applicant has placed upon himself, and that is no events until the first harvest, you know, what constitutes a harvest? You know, how much? That can indicate fifty percent of wine. There, I mean, that sounds okay, that that sounds like what the app, what the ordinance intends, but um uh, that that has to be tied down as well a little bit, a little bit more than it is. Uh, our third core, um, yes, the fourth question, sorry, uh, is uh, all, uh, all the event information is centered on large events. So five large events in the first year after the first harvest, but what about small events? And um, will the smaller event, events be scheduled uh daily, weekly, as needed? So I think we we need uh to uh consider, you know, daily events as well, you know, small events as well as the large events. And you know, really, what is a small event? Is it ten people? Is it five people? Um, so that that's uh something we would have to uh, address. And then the final issue that, you know, one of the uh applicant's conditions was this uh um step up that would allow more and more large events as uh they were having success and meeting the standards and things like that, planning, you know, township could allow more. And our comment is that it should be either the planning commission or township board that would conduct the review. Um, and we suggest a public hearing should be held to ensure that all neighbor concerns are being addressed. So if this would happen, let's let's uh, assume this was approved in some manner. Let's assume it took three years to grow the grapes and get the first harvest. And the applicant then can do five large events per year. Then then let's say they believe that's successful. Uh, they petitioned to to have additional events after that first year. Um, we suggest that if that is the situation, we would at a minimum want the planning commission and township board to weigh in on that and have a public hearing so that the residents could verify, you know, their experiences with uh with this uh project. Um, and by the way, with regard to conditions, and this, this is a comment for the planning commission, um, this is a conditional land use. And conditional land uses are those uses that um, you know, in every zoning district, there's two lists of uses. So there's a list of uses permitted by right. And in the ag district, those are things like, of course, agriculture. So the whole growing of grapes, that that's, of course, they could do that without any uh additional review by the township. In fact, there's, there's, there's no review by the planning commission township board, even uh, the the zoning office, that you can just do that as a use permitted by right. Um, single-family housing is a use permitted by right. So as long as a house meets setbacks, uh, of course, they can do that with no additional review. So and then there's other things too, but but typically agricultural residential are the primary uses that are permitted in the agricultural district by right. Now, in every, in every zoning district, there's also this other list of uses. And those are, those are uses that are called conditional uses. Those uses are uses that may be appropriate in certain locations, but might not be appropriate in other locations within that same zoning district. So this allows the planning commission and ultimately the township board to make the determination if those uses, if the use per uh proposed is acceptable in the specific location that it's being proposed in. And so we have a whole series of standards. Those standards are contained in our our review here. Um, and and my point is that the township, the planning commission and the township board, ultimately the township board, can place conditions on a conditional land use um, that the township believes will help the request meet the standards of the of the ordinance, of the special land use part of the zoning ordinance. So, for example, you, the planning commission and the township board could take it upon themselves to limit the number of participants. You could say a hundred, you could say seventy-five, you could say fifty. You do not need the permission of the applicant to make that kind of condition. This is, this is not like a conditional rezoning where the applicant has to, you know, the applicant proposes a condition and the township either accepts it or rejects it. This is one of the conditions where you, with the planning commission and ultimately the township board, have some discretion. You can place conditions yourself on a piece, on a proposed special land use that you believe will make it more compatible to the neighborhood. So just remember that as you're going through your deliberations, you're not simply bound by the condition that the applicant has um suggested. We could go above and beyond those, um, as long as those conditions are somehow related to the ordinance standards. We can't, of course, come up with crazy conditions, but um, we can uh come up, those conditions have to be based on ordinance standards. And in 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 capping the number of persons, cap like hours of operation, months of operation, uh, you know, those are all legitimate things that would relate to the standards of the ordinance that the township uh could impose. So I I digress a little bit, but I think it's important so for the planning commission, understand that um you can place additional conditions, not you don't just have to accept what the applicant has provided. Um, our third item that has to be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission was to consider potential impacts to adjacent residential properties. We have heard uh from a number of property owners that have concerns um about this use. Uh, in in part to address that concern, of course, we had our meeting onsite with the applicant, with the sound engineer, and I think that, I think the noise uh frankly is probably the biggest item. Of course, there's other items of traffic, but noise is the biggest, and that's how the applicant tried to address that. The planning commissioners were at that meeting, so that's another point uh that would be something you might want to deliberate on and perhaps ask the applicant some additional questions about. Uh, my fourth item is uh for the planning commission to consider whether the proposed use is consistent with the master plan based on the proposed use and the intent to the OAR master plan category. I kind of touched on this already. Um, you know, this to allow um, uh, uh, commercial agricultural uses within an agricultural district is, you know, in my opinion, would be in keeping with the master plan because we're trying to promote agriculture, we're trying to allow farmers to farm and make money and not have to sell their property and fragment the property into lots. That's why this provision was put in the ordinance, frankly. Um, however, I mentioned this uh, this link, and we're, and we we, the township, planning commission, township board has to be comfortable that this link between agriculture and a uh, a a organized meeting space is being met. And uh, a- as you heard from the applicant, as I mentioned, they're trying to address that by postponing any potential events for five or for three to four years, depending on when they can get their harvest. But there's still the question that those grapes aren't being grown right now. This is not an active agricultural situation with uh a grape harvest thing. So making that relationship, uh, creating that relationship is a concern to me and I think is an area of deliberation of the planning commission and perhaps against addressing some additional questions to the applicant. Um, the five, fifth item is to verify no wetlands are present during site plan review. Um, this brings up another procedural issue that I that I think is important. Um, this is not site plan approval, this is conditional land use approval. So this is the part of the process that the township is trying to determine if this use is appropriate in this location. Um, if the conditional land use is approved, the applicant will also have, or I should, I should say, as a second step, the applicant will have to submit a site plan. So this is not site plan approval. Approving, even if this was approved, there's a, there's another process that the applicant have to come to us with in that site plan approval, where where some of these details, of course, could be worked out. But um, uh, uh, so I mentioned no wetlands, that that has to, that that would be the the next step. We wouldn't normally be looking at that at the conditional use stage, particularly for a use like this, where we're just trying to determine if a organized meeting space is okay in in ag, in this, not just the agricultural district, because it's likely okay some, you know, in places within the township, but is it okay in this particular place? And that's, that's why there is conditional land use, and that's why this is a public hearing. That's why this is one of those times that you do, in fact, the planning commission does, in fact, and township board has discretion. Um, the uh six items, provide any preliminary septic use information for for the county health department. Um, and then number seven, provide preliminary information on well and septic constraints. Uh, these are items that would be good to know at the stage of review, but certainly will be required at the site plan stage of review. I don't know if the applicant has reached out to the county health department with regard to, with with regard to well and septic, and that's something that will have to be uh addressed. Um, number eight, planning commission to address the standards um and findings of the conditional land use review as noted. Those are contained within our zone, with, or excuse me, within our review. Um, those are, th- those are contained in our ordinance or in our review. And in in essence, the conditional land use standards are uh six questions that all get to, um, the 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 idea is, is this appropriate in this location? Is it gonna be harmonious with the neighbors? Is it gonna cause extra cost to the township? Is it going to, you know, uh, be in character with the area? Is it gonna cause traffic issues? So there's, there's all these questions that are part of the required standards and findings for conditional land use review um, that the planning commission has to be comfortable with uh if this is to go forward. Um, we had some question, we had a question about the uh ambient measurement of noise um, and how that corresponds with the decimal reading. Perhaps the applicant can address that when I'm, when I'm done. And then um, uh, we we haven't seen um at least the current version of the plan, uh, the location of the crops or or a good, a good feeling for where those are gonna be planted. And you know, if this is going to move forward as, as a, you know, organized meeting space for an agricultural use to try to promote agriculture, um, you know, we should see the that, you know, we should, we should know where those crops are gonna be located. Um, and then lastly, while this is more of a site plan issue, um, we would like to know the uh, the, you know, height detail of any lighting that would be proposed to ensure that it doesn't impact uh neighbors' property. So you know, there, there, there are some, there's, there's, you know, a number of details. Some of them are final site plan issue details. Um, my main concern is, as I mentioned before, is the township has to be very comfortable with this idea that this project is um promoting agriculture or will, you know, be an integral part of of open space and agriculture on the property. Um, and uh, you know, having no grapes currently grown or planted on the property is uh a bit of a hurdle for me. But I do understand that the applicant is wait, you know, indicates that they're, they're okay waiting for three to four years to actually have an event, which does address that to a certain degree. That will have to be uh, you know, planning commission is gonna have to be made comfortable or that you're gonna have to be comfortable with that. And if it was to move forward, that would have to be a very specific condition of the special land use moving forward. So those are the comments again. I I I didn't go through all fifteen pages, but I probably talked too long. But if uh, I I'd be happy to try to answer any procedural questions or any details about my uh, uh, review comments that you have. And um, uh, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chairperson Culberson.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so what I'd like to do is just um start, did the, I I believe Doug, there was a note that was added um, that did show approximately where the the vineyard fields were proposed and answered all of those questions. Yeah. So I think the applicant did provide a little bit of supplementary information on that. Um, so I want to start with commissioner uh questions and and comments. Commissioner Commissioner Chang.
Before I start, I do have a lot of questions. This, this question is for Mr. Luon. Conditional use permits, if they're not enacted within a certain amount of time, don't they expire?
Yes, there's, there's an expert, I, I, I will look at that, but I think if part of the condition is that they can't start in five years, I think that would address that concern.
Okay, I, I'll go through my comments, but if they, if they expire within, you know, 24 months or 36 months, then I think the conversation is moot tonight. They need to come back, you know, when the grapes are actually grown. So that's, that's my point.
Yeah, yeah. But I think if they made a condition, if one of the conditions of conditional use permit is that they don't do anything for three years, I, I believe that would address that.
Okay.
That expiration.
Okay. All right, my first comments are to the petitioners. I thought uh Brian and Lori did a great job. Thank you for having us out to the site. Uh, it was informative. I, it answered a lot of my questions and honestly, the noise, I thought it was fairly well addressed. I'm not as concerned about the noise as probably a lot of the neighbors are, but I don't live adjacent to this property either. Um, and same with the traffic. I think that'll be off peak hours. You know, if they're going to be doing it, it's clear they're going to probably concentrate more on Friday and Saturday and not during business hours, you know, eight to five. So again, that's, that's not my bigger concern. Um, my concern is the one that I think Mr. Luon had mentioned is that this is an organized space that is accessory and complimentary. And while we are out there, I, I didn't see any grapes planted. So unless I, I missed it, they haven't planted the grapes yet. And that's when it's appropriate, I think, is when they've actually started, you know, something that's actually accessory to what they're proposing, then it's more appropriate to, to hear the petition. Um, because the way it's set up, it almost seems to me that, you know, the, the wine production is accessory to the barn, uh, the event barn. The barn is an accessory to, to the wine production. So I, I have concerns with that on top of reading through the application. There was, I think they had catering and alcohol, not just mentioning the wine that would be there. And I think the, if the wine were the focus, that it was like a taste, more of a tasting room, that I would be more on board with this. So, you know, I don't get the sense that I can support it with its being, you know, I don't think that what's being proposed for something that's later on Friday and Saturday night, that it's, it's not truly, I believe, you know, accessory or complimentary because it's not just a wine tasting room or wine production or wine tours or hayride, something along those lines. These are for at least starting out to five bigger events. And as you had said, how many smaller events are we going to have? At 75 people, 100 people? These are, this is geared, I think, towards, you know, graduations and weddings, et cetera. That, that's not accessory to, to the vineyard. So uh, I'll let everybody else talk. I may have more, more questions. But that's, that's kind of my input right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Hyde.
Thank you. Um, and thanks, Chris Chang. I had some of the same concerns. And what I wanted to say was, it sounds like, if I'm not mistaken, Doug, that um 50% of the grapes must be in their wine or 50% of the wine must be what they're selling. Not quite sure how that mix is in the statute, but um, if that's the case, that uh, only 50%, when they have such a small area that they're talking about putting to grapes, even the first year's grape harvest won't be that great and the wine produced from it won't be that great. They're not going to have too many events before they run out unless they're planning on bringing in outside uh, wine. And I don't think that's what we want to approve, so I want to be clear on that. In the liquor, I thought was if they produce that from their grapes, but I'm not sure on that either. I think I, onto another point, I think tonight we heard from the applicant that they were not asking for weddings, that they didn't want that. I'd like to be clear on that and what else they would exclude from the list of events that they are not interested in because I think I agree with Commissioner Chang that we don't want the events to be driving the farm. We want the farm to be driving the events. If they're, you know, adhering to the letter of the ordinance. And I'm, I could leave it at that, but I, I quickly sum up that I'd like to, if we do approve it, I'd like to have stipulated that the barn be built to the assumptions that the soundscape engineers stated they were assuming in order to get their reduced levels outside the barn from the sounds, the music inside the barn. And that the levels of sound outside the barn actually were measured and were truly what soundscape calculated they would be based on their assumptions. So those two things right there would take away any concern I had for sound uh in the neighborhood. I'll leave it at that for now. And if anybody else has any comments, I'd like to hear those.
Yeah, can I, can I make a clarification?
Yes.
Um, so the question, so yes and no about the 50%. The uh, the section of the zoning ordinance, agricultural, commercial, tourism, business, section 36, 149 indicates that um uh, if there are certain uses, so there are, it says uses one through six of the current ordinance provisions um indicate that um, uh, you know, 50% of the uh, uh, you know, 50% of the whatever it is, well, particularly cider mills, wineries, selling product in a tasting room, they have to contain at least 50% of the crops or produce grown on site. So that's a specific condition, but then you go down to, so that's, that's one of the one through six, and it's probably confusing how I'm saying this, but then you go down to number eight on, in this list of uses, and that's called other commercial tourism businesses that are complimentary and accessory to the primary agricultural land use of the subject property. And that includes what the applicant's asking for, and that's organized meeting space. There's that 50% uh requirement is not um included or required for simply organized meeting space. But if they were doing strictly a wine, you know, wine tasting, a winery's selling product in a tasting room, you know, that part of it would have to meet the 50%, uh, but just in, just a organized meeting space does not. So I don't know if that clarified or made things more confusing, but that's, there's a little difference there.
That helps. Uh, with the product that they were selling, Aaron Farm Wine, if we want to brand it, would that have to be 50% or greater of their grapes?
Yes, I believe so, because it's, it's a winery and, and, and yeah, so that part would. But the ordinance, um, you know, would allow a, you know, meeting, uh, meeting space without any vineyard, you know, in theory, that, that's what they could do and that's what they've requested. That, that's what the special land use is. However, they're also indicating that they're doing a winery. So it's kind of in, in a way both apply, but um, just for the meeting space part of it for events, there's no 50% product requirement.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Hallid.
Uh, I just, uh, I want to say that I uh probably submit what, uh, support what Commissioner Chang presented as his reasons for uh, waning in support of, of this proposal. I, I guess I wonder why we're so worried about sound tests if it's not going to be noisy. And if there, I'm, I'm hearing that they only want four permits plus a Fourth of July permit per year. Uh, maybe I'm hearing that wrong. That if it's just a tasting facility, that that type of a, an event could be done by eight or nine P M. And I still question the uh need for the sound tests. Doug, does the, the, this conditional land use would run with the property in perpetuity, correct?
Yes.
So, so I, I do want to comment that, that the misty, um, misty properties, misty ridge and misty farms both presented that they would be having um gatherings, like University of Michigan gatherings and fundraising gatherings and originally they started out having, we're going to have one event per week and maybe in one event during the week. And somehow that has evolved into what they've got going on now, which is perpetual. So I am, uh, until there is, is crop production there, I can't support this proposal.
Commissioner Carteau.
Thanks. Um, I first had a couple of questions from Mr. Luon. So I understand the conditional use permit goes with the land. But would any of the additional conditions that we decided to impose, such as an annual review with the possibility of step up or step down, would that continue with the, with the property? Um, and then just in terms of um doing that, would that be done by, you, you mentioned having hearings, would that be organized by planning? You said, or maybe the township board, would there be a fee for that annual review? And, and I'm just wondering how that could work and whether that kind of requirement could offer a lever for us to start to um rein in some of the, the activities at party barns if we were to, or event, I don't want to call it a party barn, event spaces if we are going to approve them in the future. Just curious about your thoughts and then I want to uh follow up with a couple of comments.
Yes, that, so conditions do go along with, the conditions go with it, not just the use. So any conditions that the township board ultimately would place on this uh, go along with the property. Those, those are contained in the conditional land use um certificate that we, we keep all, any conditional land use that's approved. We have a conditional land use certificate at the township that has the list of conditions and they would, they just go along with the property. Um, you, you could make those more, uh, I guess more permanent. They could be recorded at the registered deeds. We normally don't do that, but I suppose that could happen. It's usually, it's usually sufficient just to have them in the conditional land use certificate. And the, the issue about inspection and I, can you ask, ask that question again? I, I lost track on that one.
Sorry, just for doing that annual review, would there be a fee? How would that be done? Um, you know, how, how would we actually implement that?
Well, if there was a annual, if there was an annual review required on a certain date by certain people, um, it would be coordinated, you know, by the township and whoever those people were, whether it was, you know, the township supervisor or township supervisor, zoning administrator, whoever, whoever that would be, they would just, they would do that inspection as a course of, you know, of their duties. We, we, we could impose some kind of annual cost, I suppose, on that. That would probably, that kind of cost detail would probably be best left up to the township board to, if, if this moves on to the township board. Um, but could you do it? Yes, I think you could do that.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I just wanted to say, um, I, I'm really feeling conflicted about this because I, I really appreciate all the effort that the applicant has put in to this. And I also really appreciate loving the rural character and quiet of Syo. It feels like a catch 22. What I, what I heard the applicant say earlier is that it's very expensive to start grapes and it's a long-term process. And yet, um, according to their recounting from other vineyards, it's very hard to make that a successful agricultural enterprise without having something like tasting events to give them the value added, to actually make it a commercial success. So I agree with Mr. Luon that this in many ways does seem very much in keeping with the goals of our um agricultural zoning and master plan and our, our wish to promote new agriculture. You know, ironically, if they wanted to divide the property and sell it for residences, that would be permitted by right and we wouldn't even be considering this. Um, so I'm, I, I really understand that it's challenging to start an agricultural enterprise. I do also hear though that it, it feels like to really be able to call this an accessory event, we would have to really clearly spell out the conditions um, and specify exactly how this would work, how long would that be, when that would be. Feeling like this might just be premature to have everything. So I'm, I'm still a little bit divided here um be- because I really see uh, both views and, and I hope we can find some way to um encourage this to move forward without maybe fully committing to the events yet. I wonder if there's a way to scale down, just do, you know, like a, a small tasting room without the events yet or something so that there would be a way to get the ball rolling without um fully going this way. And then a second question I had is if, if we're actually moving ahead as the, as the planning commission with a special event ordinance, would an alternative be to simply get this started and then apply for individual events? I mean, Mr. Luon, I wonder if you could comment on, on what the difference might be from having a conditional use permit that allows you your, your five events per year versus Joyce doing an event by event application?
Oh, I just wanted to chime in on that a little bit. I was looking at the proposed special events ordinance and I think um, I, I was thinking the same thing, but it is, it does have e- either two small um events, so you could do one small and one large, which would be over 150, you know, so that it would be a, a way of um, doing, you know, an annual harvest event and then maybe another smaller event or something like that. Um, the large events are over 150, I think, in the event ordinance, or the proposed one. So I, I was thinking along the same lines and I, I can, um, I see the importance of wanting some sort of uh conditional use if you're going to, you know, plant grapes and so forth of, around the wine tasting room. And I would support something that was small. And then I think you have a couple choices. One, we need to pass that, you know, special events ordinance. You could have a couple of events a year. Um, the other uh way would be to come back and amend your conditional use permit. Um, you know, once you, once the vineyards were established, go forth and there was a track record there uh, with possibly using, you know, a couple, the uh, uh, special events ordinance um to uh have those events. So I think there's a way that we can support, you know, the new agriculturally based business uh, which is part of the intent of, of it without um, um doing a full-blown uh, uh, meeting space. Other commissioners? Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, just to, to follow up then from what Commissioner Hyde said. So maybe the, the applicant can respond. So they will not have weddings and receptions then as part of their five large events. And then just to follow up, what do they consider? What do they define a small event? And how many small events would they likely have?
Uh, I'd be happy to respond. Uh, thank you, Chris. We're willing to accept a condition of no weddings. Uh, it's really kind of soured this whole thing into a wedding barn and that's not what we're trying to accomplish here. So I just want to put that out there. Um, as far as small events, it's probably going to be once or twice a week. As far as small events, it's probably going to be once or twice a week and it's not going to be every week because we have to have wine to sell. So, you know, how frequently will that happen? It's tough for me to commit without actually previously running a wine business, but I would say twice a week is my expectation. The only other thing I wanted to note is we would love to plant the grapes first, but it's probably, so from what we have found, it's 20 to $100,000 in acre to plant grapes. So we're talking about a, a million plus dollar investment and that's why we're here first. You know, it'd be kind of like investing in the size of a building without having, you know, an understanding of what you're going to do with that building because just planting the grapes, we don't think we can sell them without promoting them locally. So I just wanted to add that and I appreciate the opportunity to respond. Thank you.
A, a question on why you think you need the 150 capacity? That would be a standing room capacity only in the, in the barn.
It was really a tough call for us to pick a number. So we talked to other vineyards in the area, including Sand Hill Cranes. And we asked them, you know, what do you think we need? And we were originally, one of the commissioners, commissioners asked us, would 50 do? And Lori works for Sand Hill Crane now, part-time, and she could attest that there is sometimes more than 50 people. You know, would 100 suffice? It possibly would. We're just a little bit concerned about giving an estimate upfront and being too conservative. But again, we would be open to discuss the number for sure.
Commissioner Hyde.
Thank you. Um, is there a capacity limit for a building per size, like the barn?
The, um, in the code, a, a standing room, uh, is usually, uh, I think it's, uh, seven square feet per person. A buffet, sitting down kind of thing is 15. Um, classroom is typically like 20. That, you know, those are from a fire marshal occupancy load kind of piece. Okay, commissioners, so are, are people, um, wanting to make, you know, take action tonight? If we're not going to take action, then there needs to be some sort of direction. Thoughts on, on this? Commissioner Hyde.
Well, I'd be willing to take action tonight, but I would, I would definitely say that, uh, depending on how it went, there should be several of our concerns that we brought up tonight be in place. I, I think that putting off the events until they have their harvest and they actually have produced product, not just harvested grapes, because they're not talking about having grapes for sale. So there, there's more to this. If they're talking about having an event before they have product, I think that is not accessory to the farm. So I think that we need to at least state that they need to have product that they're offering for tasting. There's more. I, I think I already brought up that I thought that we should put in place their, their sound testing and, uh, construction, you know, as they stated that they would adhere to, so that that is part of it. Uh, I think that had a great deal of concern from the neighbors that what was being demoed for sound levels might not be accurate based on, you know, if you just had a barn that had cracks in it, I mean, it definitely has to attenuate it in order to get down to the 64 dB. So at least I would put those on there. I'd also like to point out that not only would they, would the township have the ability to step up or step down, but if they don't adhere to the restrictions, I believe that the ordinance allows it to be removed, if I'm not mistaken. So there's more to it than just stepping it up and stepping it down. That's a good way to look at it, but it's not total. Those are my thoughts.
I have a question, process question, Doug. Um, to amend a conditional use, what is the process? And how would that be different trying to do a step up or step down on a annual basis?
To amend, it's the same process you're going through right now. It's, it'd be a new, it'd be a completely new request. And, and if we put something in there about stepping up and stepping down every five years or every year, it's, it's not, it's not a new request, it's just part of it, part of the same request. So there'd be no requirement, you know, well, I, I'm suggesting there'd be a requirement for a public hearing, but, um, there would be, uh, you know, it's not a new application. But usually when you amend a conditional land use, you basically have to start over.
Thank you. So, um, I'd be interested, commissioners, is there, um, a thought on, um, a condition that there is, is product for tasting? It's that the, uh, construction, uh, I, I think we can, um, require that the, the construction be, um, reviewed and sealed by the sound engineer. The review process. But what I'm not hearing is whether, whether people agree on a certain capacity or even want to move forward with some sort of con, uh, conditional use at this point. I, I mean, my opinion is to keep it, you know, at somewhere at, at 50, um, to begin with. And, you know, have, um, until there is, um, a, a track record and, um, and I agree that there should be a public hearing around any kind of increases. Yeah, Jay?
I'm just wondering if, if that's the direction we want to go as opposed to denial. Would, would it, is the, is the, is the planning commission interested in maybe having a couple of the members or, or our, our planner work out some details and with some guidance as far as numbers, hours, uh, et cetera? But those are the two choices, either get a group, get, get a commissioner to work it out or deny it, I think.
Timing is another thing, you know, how late it goes. Uh, Commissioner Carteau.
So just to Mr. Luan, a process question. I mean, i- is that a possibility to refer this to a smaller group to work out terms to, to bring back? Or, or what are, you know, if we don't want to outright deny it and don't want to table it yet again, what are, what are alternatives?
You could, you could, um, refer it back to, yeah, I mean, we, we, we could work out the details. And that could simply be myself and the applicant, um, or maybe a, you know, uh, maybe the planning commission chairperson or some representative from the planning commission. We, we just want to, you know, make sure that any discussions that occur during that meeting, you know, are, are, you know, revealed to the rest of the committee during open meetings so that, you know, it doesn't look like any backroom dealings are going on. But, um, but yeah, I mean, we could, I, I'd be willing to work with the applicant if that's what you, you know, that's the direction you want to go and try to come up with some more concrete, uh, conditions. And that they wouldn't be on time.
I guess one of the hesitancies I have is that, you know, we're still talking, um, I, and I, I guess my hesitancy is in, in looking at some of the wine country, um, zoning and so forth, they're very careful about the size of the tasting rooms and, and so forth. And they're not event spaces, you know, the, and, and so I really have a hesitancy of, I could see, you know, keeping it more of a, a business use and using the events ordinance to do a, a harvest festival and, you know, something else, um, where you have a couple of, of, um, events that, uh, you know, get managed through a different process every year. But it, it really goes back to whether having, uh, such a large, um, gathering makes sense.
Commissioner Chang.
Just backtracking a little bit, I think to when we were discussing code. If, let's just, for ex, the, the petitioner had mentioned it, it may cost up to a, a million dollars to plant the grapes. So I can see why he wants some assurances, um, that he would have an event, an event barn. But let's play this out a little bit because we know it's at least three to four years. What happens if, I think what Commissioner Hyde said, we have a bad crop, we have a recession, those grapes are never planted. So the petitioner may have already relocated the barn, invested in the barn. So at that point, it really does turn into, I think it was mentioned, organizational space that's in the code. And organizational space is pretty broad. And if we're saying organizational space instead of an accessory or complimentary use to the, to the vineyard, well, that opens us up and we've already decided that one, he'll, he'll take weddings and receptions off the, uh, you know, off the conditional use. So, you know, what are we looking at then if it's truly organizational space in the future? You know, three, four, five years down the road? And what are we getting ourselves into? I myself would feel much, much more comfortable, I think, you know, probably denying it. But I would be very open that to the petitioners, I'll go on record, hopefully I'm still here, maybe in three, four, five years, that if they do plant the grapes, if they do want to have a wine tasting room and it's accessory or complimentary, I'd be much more supportive than leaving this open-ended as, well, this could end up just being organizational space. And that's pretty broad and I don't know how we're going to write what you are allowed other than saying we're going to, we're going to extract weddings and receptions and, I don't know, birthday parties? Well, I don't know what it leaves, what, what's left for, for 150 people to gather there. So I, I think we're kind of painting ourselves in a little bit of a corner. That's just my thought process on it. And in fact, maybe it's a question for the, the, the hearings. With, you know, if they got conditional approvals, are they still going to build, relocate that barn without having? If we put limitations on them that you can't have more than 50? I don't know how you can, that's economically feasible or we limit you to, you know, two small events a week and that's it for, you know, four months? Yeah, I just, if we start capping this stuff, I don't know how he's going to get a return on investment. So that's just my thoughts off the top of my head.
Did you want me, I'm happy to respond to that if, if that was a question.
Sure, I'd absolutely like to hear more feedback.
Yeah, and, and perhaps trying to understand a little bit, well, what kind of events do you need for that kind of capacity?
Well, it, so first, if, if the vineyard, if we can't get grapes to go, that's the risk we bear. So we run a personal financial risk of moving a barn and basically having a cool playhouse, right? For personal use. So that is the risk we bear, but we feel pretty confident that we will be able to get grapes up. We're less confident about our ability to sell them in the open market without the space. So we are definitely okay with bearing the risk that if we don't have product and the space isn't used to sell products, there is no space. So we're, we're okay with that. As far as the size, uh, we don't really know either, to be honest. And one thing that we would certainly be open to is, uh, this sort of annual review where we talk about number of events, we can also talk about size of events. Because I do think, you know, the first year we have product, we'll probably be lucky to get 50 people in a building, you know, at one time to try to sell the product. So, um, we would be open to saying, you know, there's a 50-person limit per event for the first, you know, post-harvest sale and then we could revisit that with you in an annual review. I mean, we're, we're pretty flexible, but the space is to sell wine. So, um, having those paired together, we are completely okay with because that's the purpose.
So, yeah, one, my understanding is that unless I'm misinformed, that, um, the selling of wine without nitrates, I believe that's what's without, if you use the grapes grown locally, is not a problem. I, I understand that those wineries are typically sold out. So I, I guess I don't have a concern with that as much as, I, I'm not sure it's within, within the scope of our authority to move forward with an event space under the agricultural tourism ordinance before there's agriculture. So I, I, I support the concept, but I'm not sure that, that like, uh, like Commissioner Chang says, that, what are we getting into?
Commissioner Hyde.
This is an aside, I believe Jackie, Commissioner Carteau, um, had a, perhaps had a, uh, network problem. She, I think she's waiting in the wings.
Oh.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you so much. I am having a, I had a computer crash, so I'm rejoining.
All right, so I hear two, two different kind of things. One is can we work out, um, something around starting at 50? With some sort of review and that would be encouraging new agriculturally based businesses as part of the intent. Then I hear, um, another, uh, saying, we just shouldn't get into this until there is actual, uh, product. And so I want to see where people are because if we don't have a majority who want to move forward with, uh, working out terms, um, then we should, we should just deny it. If we do have a majority that want to work out terms, um, then we can either, it's, it is getting late and we have another item on the agenda too. We could, um, you know, work out terms and then come back, um, for the, um, at an, at another point in time. So thoughts, I hear, um, Commissioner Holland, am I correct in, in you would prefer to just deny it as opposed to, um, working out something that, where we don't have, uh, an agricultural product currently?
If I knew that, I'd be making a motion.
All right, Commissioner Chang.
The first thing is, uh, Commissioner Moore is having trouble also. She's having.
Oh dear.
Yep, so she's, she's out in another lands also.
Oh, she is. Can you, um, can you bring her in? Thank you.
Yeah.
She's probably saying, I want to talk.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
I, I'll give a quick other two cents again. You know, just listening to the petitioner, Brian, speak, he, he said he's willing to take all the risk by putting the barn up and possibly not having, you know, the agricultural part. You know, I, I look at it as if he's willing to take that kind of risk. I say plant the grapes first, start the winery and come back. And I'd be more than happy, I think, in three to four years to approve this. I'd just be more solidified for me as far as what the program is. So I, I, I'm still leaning towards, unless I can be compelled otherwise, that I, I I'm still leaning towards, unless I can be compelled otherwise, that I I'd vote for denial based on what's been presented tonight, but I'd be more inclined to vote for something like this in in the near future. Once the grapes are up and he's asking for what's actually happening, happening out on the site, instead of kind of putting the, you know, the cart in front of the horse of, let's get the barn up and then we'll wait for the grapes. I I'd feel much more comfortable with with the grapes and and the vineyard and the product, and then um coming back and saying, yes, you, this is what the conditional use permit is. I mean, it's a little unorthodox to to approve something that might happen in four years. So that's a little strange to me, but that's, that's where I kind of stand on the issue.
And and Chris, I totally agree with you, except I I, as I recall, the production facility was going to be in the basement in the lower level of the barn. Either that or it's going to be a 4,800 square foot barn. So um, I mean, I I I agree with you, but is there a an alternative uh production facility where that could take place to at least get up and going? So it's kind of a catch.
Commissioner Moore, you get the floor. But you're muted. Still muted.
Yes, thank you.
And we've got a lot of feedback.
That's me. I I was trying on my laptop when I couldn't get in. I've been off for at least 30 minutes. Uh, but I have been listening. I've been able to hear you. I just haven't been able to speak. So um I did send an email because I felt like a vote was going, going to happen. Um and I guess I rise in support to the remarks that were made by Commissioner Holland and Commissioner Chang. And I think we're getting the the cart before the horse here. Um, and I'm very concerned about the noise level. Um, I received, uh, I left after the first test, but it it became clear that people could hear uh at the second test, they could hear what was being played on the sound test um in from the other um like um where the where uh the Heron Farm ends, property ends and neighbor's property picks up. Um, and I think that's a, that's a valuable issue for us to consider as commissioners. Um, and I was thinking about um Mr. Luang's comments about what the purpose is. I mean, the purpose of the sections was to allow farmers to prevent having to sell off their land. I don't know if that was existing farmers. I mean, here we're having somebody butt into the property, knowing its area, its rural area. Um, I don't know if that's um a deline- delineation that's fair, but um I'm not comfortable. I would deny the request. I'm not comfortable with, for the reasons that I stated and those that I've heard Commissioner Chang speak about, as well as Commissioner Holland.
Is that a motion?
I'm not comfortable with that. Um, and I think we ought to, um, we've already had some problems with other event barns that have not fit well into the neighborhood. And that's what we're talking about, too. And that's, you know, one of the difficulties, I think, for us, is the competing interests um with the um where the ordinance talks about and then the quiet enjoyment of the neighbor's property. Um, I think we should be listening about that, too. So I would um, I would not support a motion to, with conditions. Um, so I think that's the whole crux of the issue. Um, I don't know what else I can say about that, but appreciate the opportunity to speak.
So is there, I I see a somewhat of a split group here. Um, no? Is there a motion then?
Can, can, can you hear me, or am I?
We can hear you.
Disconnected again?
Yep, we can hear you.
So regarding conditional land use, number 20002, to establish an agricultural tourist, commercial tourism business, Heron Farms. Based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the site plan and related information received by the township uh on date, fails to meet the required standards and findings for conditional land use, and recommends denial. And specifically, it has found that the following, that's, no, that's it. That's the end.
Is there support?
Doug, is there some more? Is there more to that?
Go ahead. I'm sorry. After your support, I gotta come up.
Okay.
Support by Commissioner Heid, is that correct? Further discussion? Mr. Luang.
I would just say that that.
Just want to point of clarification on the motion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Moore.
I'm just gonna, just point of clarification on the motion. The motion is to deny the application?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would just put in, I don't know if you said this, Jay, but I would put in your um motion that it uh, the planning commission does not believe it meets the standards of section 36224, those are the conditional land use standards, um, as well as, and then, you know, as well as the specific standards of the agricultural, commercial, tourism uh section of the zoning ordinance, which is 36 dash 149. Um, and you, you know, you could mention, it sounds, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think, yeah, provide some specificity to your motion, particularly of a denial. Of course, the township board will make the official motion, whatever that happens to be. But I think they will get your minutes, of course, but to help the township board, I think a few select items, reasons of why the denial, why you recommend denial would be helpful.
So you're saying that specifically, we find that they have not met the required standards found in section 36 dash 224, uh, of the conditional land use standards? And?
So in that, that agricultural tourism section is 36 dash 149.
Does not meet the condition, the uh agricultural tourism standard 36 dash 149, is it, Doug?
Yeah, and and not, and they do meet some of those, so you can't ju- just say, does not meet all of those standards.
It does not meet all of those standards. So I would second that. Are you in agreement with that?
Commissioner Heid, are you in agreement?
I would. Do we want to discuss, if we're going to put details in for the board, do we want to discuss what we would consider it to meet, or do we want to leave that for the minutes of the meeting? Such as?
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be more helpful to, to explain why you don't think it meets those things.
Such as, the agricultural business has not been established?
Yeah.
That's really, I think that's really what it comes down to.
Yeah.
So either we put a condition on acceptance with the, that uh in place first, or we deny it because it isn't there. I believe we're going for denial because it isn't there, if Commissioner Holland agrees.
Yes.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, um, Secretary Chang, a roll call vote.
Commissioner Heid.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
No.
Both approve, 5-1, denial.
Right. Thank you all. And then we'll move to our new business. And that is our uh East End High Private Road. I think that begins at uh page 117 in the packet. Okay. All right. So um, Mr. Luang, do you want to um start briefly with the, the new information? Any new information? And then we'll go to the petitioner.
Sure. The um, so, uh, thank you. The um, if you remember, this item was postponed the last time it was thrown in the planning commission, um postponed twice, actually, to get information or to get a letter from the township attorney. Um, Jim Fink did provide a letter from the township, you know, he is the township attorney, and um that letter is dated May 10th. It's in the packet. It's actually uh page one, starts at page 118 of the packet that's online. And um, uh, he indicates that um, uh, i- in essence, that the applicant does have um the right to upgrade this easement. At least that's my reading of his letter. Um, is uh, uh, the last paragraph of his letter indicates, in sum, the answer to your specific question is, yes, it is possible for the easement holder to expand the existing easement and build a private road, but the applicant must first resolve the cost of maintenance, and it's possible that one more neighbor, neighboring property owners will challenge the right of the applicant to expand and extend the private road. So, you know, while, while the township attorney believes they can ex- expand and extend the private road, he's kind of, I guess, warning the, the, the planning commission and township that, you know, there, there could be obviously folks that disagree with this opinion, and I think you heard from one of those that spoke during public comment. Um, but that was the big question, that we, everyone was asking, can, you know, the road be expanded to a class B private road or or the private drive? And the answer from the township attorney, from my reading of this, is yes, it can. So that was, that was really the big holdup here with the, the last uh time we looked at this. I, I don't have a new review because it wasn't, there's really no new information at this point, except waiting on the township attorney's uh, uh comments. And I, but I would just reiterate a couple of things. Um, one, we, we're looking at a, a two-step process here. So we're looking at a private road variance process first. Um, and the applicant would like to know if a private road variance would be granted prior to uh developing detailed engineering drawings for the actual private road. So if the private road variance happened to be approved and that private road variance request, you know, all we're really being asked for, and up to this point, what we've been asked for and what we're being asked to decide tonight is, is should, you know, are there conditions on this particular private drives that warrant the township to grant a private road variance that that would allow a class B road to be constructed within this easement, as opposed to what would be allowed by right, and that would be a class A private road? So without the public hearing, without, you know, the required public hearing, of course, the public's always welcome to provide comment, but if the applicant came in with a class A private road, which would be a 24-foot wide paved road, uh, they could do that by right, particularly in light of the township attorney's um letter indicating that they have the right to improve and expand, you know, this drive. So the applicant has come forward instead of a class A with a class B, that comes from meetings months and months ago with myself, I believe the township engineer, to trying to come up with a solution that would be less environmentally impactful. Um, and then uh, uh, due to, due to the fact that it would be a gravel road rather than a paved road, it'd be 22-foot wide instead of 24-foot wide, um, the width would be less because of the wi- width of the drive. So that's what we're being asked for. Is, are there conditions, you know, that, that present themselves in this case that would allow the planning commission and ultimately the township board to grant a variance from the private road standards? The private road standard in this case is a required class A private road. Um, so much of the discussion about natural features, tree removal, steep slopes, grading, stormwater detention, we don't know. That's really not the question. The question is class B versus class A, and all of those other questions, engineering, landscaping, tree removal, grading, slope, that will all have to be presented in, in a very specific detail at the next stage of review, at the, at the, at the private road plan stage of review. Um, so, you know, that's, that's what we're being asked to look at. I could, if you give me a moment, I could pull up the conditions for a variance for a private road, um, for a private road, uh, for a private ordinance, I should say. So let me, uh, let me pull that up for a second here. And um, so as I said, the applicant is requesting a private road variant. There is a section in the private road ordinance that talks about variances. And it, it, so it talks about where there are practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship in ways carrying out the strict letter of this chapter, such as topographical and other physical characteristics of a parcel. The township board shall have the power to vary or modify the application of provisions of this chapter so that the intent and purpose of the chapter shall be observed and public safety secured. Now, the private, the whole intent and purpose of the private road ordinance is to ensure that there is safe access to properties, particularly for pri- for emergency vehicles. So part of this is, can a variance be granted that still allows safe access to property? So going from a class A to a class B, does that allow for safe access to property? This section goes on to say that there has to be a public hearing, which we, we've had. Um, and then uh, the final section with the variance indicates, the township board may attach reasonable conditions in granting any variance from any provision of this chapter, and the breach of any conditions or the failure of any application to comply with the conditions shall void the, so that's fine. Provisions of this chapter are intended in part to enable variances to be granted and conditions attached to the variance to facilitate the upgrading of prior non-conforming rights of way and private roads to the standards of this chapter in a reasonably practical manner, including but not limited to such rights of ways in private roads, as have been established, recorded, constructed, and maintained prior to the date of adoption uh of this chapter, which cannot be brought into conformity of this chapter without unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty due to soil, topographic, or other factors. So what this last section, which is very important with what we're trying to accomplish tonight, is, you know, one, this is a, a previously established private road easement, established many, many years ago. Um, you know, are there, are there, are there topographic conditions and other conditions that would allow the township to look at a lesser of a road than is required by ordinance? So, so a class B instead of a class A, or maybe even a class C, that was brought up at the last meeting. Could the planning commission, uh, you know, could, could the planning commission through, um, you know, the applicant, uh, install a class C private road, which would be a 16-foot wide gravel, which would be even less impactful? install a class C private road, which would be a 16-foot wide gravel, which would be even less impactful? So it, this seems to have, now, this will require planning commission deliberation, of course, but this, this particular case seems to contain the ingredients that would allow a private road variance. We have an old existing easement. We have, uh, uh, natural features on the property, including steep slopes. We have an established drive that's been there for many years. And it would be difficult to bring that drive into conformance with the class A private road standards due to soils, top, top, topography, or other factors, in this case, trees. So we're looking at a private road variance. There are certain things we're supposed to be looking at. It would seem to me that this strictly for the private road variance, I'm not talking about the other issues. It would seem to me that this request has the ingredients that the ordinance asks for, for a private road variance. So with that, I will, I would turn it back over to Chairperson Culbertson, and I would be happy to try to answer any questions that there might be.
Yeah, I would like, um, the petitioner, um, if they're available, if they would like to, um, address the commission. And then we'll go to questions and deliberation.
Uh, yeah, let me, um, so we've got, I believe I just, uh, added Brett's dwellings and his wife to the, to the, I think you're, you're, you have the floor.
Good evening, and I know it's late, so we'll try to keep it brief, but to do it correctly. Gary Cade is on as well this evening, and I believe Kathy Kyneth, the engineer, is on as well. Once again, thank you for your time. Uh, we've been through this a few times and heard a lot of concerns, but like Doug mentioned, it's really to figure out what we need to design and engineer for. Last time it was mentioned the class C road. We are not opposed to that, if it would be allowed. We started with that process five years ago. But class B, class, you know, C, either way is fine. We want to be good stewards of the land. Um, I think it's going to have a lower impact and addressed a lot of the concerns rather than doing it by right. We are also willing to do some limitations on the number and density of homes. There is 15 acres back there. Uh, we are attempting to do three additional residential dwellings, of which two of us would be, uh, it's not, one lot would go up for sale. Um, two of us are part of the applicants. We've talked about doing fire, uh, passing lanes for the fire trucks and emergency vehicles. Uh, it was also mentioned about the land preservation. Prior to my involvement, Barry Lonik did make an offer on this property through the preservation group, and that did not work with the, one of the owners. And just to point out that the Allens have owned the property for over 40 years. And before this, um, driveway was improved, um, he had the access, um, I provided all the deeds, all of that legal paperwork to show that the same access that's accessed the homes that are on the existing drive are the same one that runs all the way to the creek. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Like I said, we aren't developing it for resale with the intent on ours. We're looking to build a primary residence to move back to the community.
And I believe, um, Gary Cade also wanted to make a comment.
Yes, hi, Gary Cade, 121 North Dixboro, Ann Arbor. Really appreciate the challenge that you all have on the planning commission. You know, we've been in conversation with Doug for a long, long time on this. I applied for, asking for a class C back in 2014, seven years ago, and then many years before that in conversation with Doug, but all along, you know, we've been really trying to follow the process and work through it. Unfortunately, I think what's got this so crazy is there's a lot of misinformation out there. Again, nothing in your fault, but what I'm seeing is we're putting through in a 66-foot wide road, uh, which is the 66-foot right-of-way eas, which is already there, it's the easement. And I think people don't understand that it's the question of an A could go to 32, the B is 22, and the C is 16, and what's there right now is only 10. You know, I've talked to the fire chief and, you know, he has a lot of concern when it's only 10 to 12-foot wide, getting his trucks and tankers in. So it's pretty clear something needs to be done. The whole conversation about flooding. Again, we're only talking about widening the road anywhere from four to six feet. If flooding's an issue, they'd be having that now, so you'd think they would be interested in actually making some improvements. You know, again, anything that we're doing is going to be done according to the ordinances of the township, and I actually think the ordinances of the township are pretty darn good. So it really comes down to, like Doug said, I mean, the legal easement's there, the attorneys verified that. It's really a, I mean, all we were looking for is some direction of whether it's A, B, or C. Uh, we applied for B in consultation, you know, with Doug and, you know, his planning team. Uh, you know, I applied for C back in 2014 and was tabled. So if, there seems to make an argument for C being the least intrusive. And if that's what the planning commission, you know, directs us to do, that makes perfect sense. So once we have the direction, then, as we've always discussed with Doug, and the plan is to step this, then actually take a deep dive in the details that we need, you know, for C or B. And actually, again, following township ordinances and the county ordinances, that's what we'll do and be back with you with the details. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate, you know, the challenge you have in all this.
Thank you. Um, did your engineer want to say anything before we go to commissioner questions and comments?
Hi, this is Kathy Kyneth with Macon Engineering. I think Brett and, um, Gary have summed it up and Doug fairly well. If you have any technical questions, I am here to answer them. Be happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Okay. We'll, we'll move forward with commissioner comments. Commissioner Hyde.
I have a question about, thank you very much. I'd like, I have a question about point of procedure. And then I have another comment, and then I'd hear others. Did I understand that if we take action tonight, uh, let's say we approved it, that, that the drawings that have been presented are not the engineering drawings? That the future, that there would be a future submission with the complete engineering drawings? And so any details that we're looking at should be just taken as advisement? Is that, I mean, why, why are we given the drawings if they aren't for our review? That's my point of procedure. Could you clarify that first?
Doug, will you clarify?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you will, you will be getting another set of drawings, um, a, you know, detailed road engineering drawings. If this is to be approved. And, you know, you are, you're being provided, what you're being provided so that you, you know, have an understanding, you know, some understanding of, of what the applicant's proposing to do, o- other than just them giving you a, you know, written text about what they want to do. But, yeah, they, they are, they will be required to, to provide, you know, detailed profile, you know, plan and profile drawings, detailed stormwater detention, you know, tree removal plan, you know, all of the things that we require for any kind of development. While these plans are somewhat detailed, they're not as detailed as we would get for, uh, for a full-blown private road plan.
Okay, thank you. If I could proceed, then my, uh, comments would be that my area of concern involves grade, grading, um, water runoff, retention. But the, the, there's also another issue too, and, and that's class B versus class C. I think we're now taking up, but I think class B is on the table. If we were to go to class C, I think that we need to get Chief Hood, who I admit I had a private conversation with. And I don't want to speak for him. I think that he has some concerns, though, that he needs to be consulted before we went down that road. However, with class B in front of us, I wanted to point out that the T-turnaround at the end is a very good indicator of my concern. And that shows that in a, uh, in a short distance, the road, the grading drops off quite rapidly underneath the T-turnaround. So either, if the T-turnaround were to follow the grade, then a fire truck would have to, a tanker truck would have to be turning around with both a steep slope and a side slope component to it, and it could get really tricky, let alone a passenger car, um, trying to be on this section. So I believe that we've heard comments that there would be retaining walls possibly. It's not a sure thing because it isn't shown. So, um, so grading right there is a very big concern. And therefore, if there was, um, a structure around the T-turnaround to retain a level per surface, could, you, could vehicles that wanted to be accessing the, uh, power lines and the other utilities get around that? I think they need to address that kind of thing. I just want to say that i- if we're not going to review it now, then we will be in the future, and that should be addressed. So I'll, I'll leave it at that for now and hear what everybody else has to say.
Commissioner Cartel.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say I was actually really disappointed that we didn't get some consideration of what a class C might road look, might look like, since that was specifically included in the motion to table. In particular, as we're trying to consider a class B versus a class C, and whether there would be less environmental impact, while I understand you don't want to go through the entire details of all the drawings, it would have been helpful to make this decision, to see the difference in the number of trees that might be removed. Commissioner Culbertson and, uh, Mr. Luan, and I did have a conversation with Chief Hood in which he had come up with an idea that could deal with some of the fire safety concerns, even with a class C, by instead of doing turnarounds, uh, doing a standing water pipe down the road so that any pump trucks would only be parking East El High Road proper and filling up the water system, and only one pump truck would need to go down the road, and that could serve all of the house potentially on the road. So I'm kind of disappointed that Ken didn't actually try to explore that. Um, when I look at the tree survey, uh, you know, 37 trees are being removed, including seven landmark oaks, and six additional smaller oaks that are the forests of the future, as well as walnuts, pines, and so on. What would that look like? You know, would a, would a class C road really help address this? I, I, I understand that a class C road was considered before. It, it, I think it would have been helpful to bring that forward, so we understand what the differences are. My understanding of that wasn't, um, it was a shared drive as proposed. And so, um, it, it sounds like it would have been different than the, than what we're seeing now. So I guess, um, it, it's a little bit hard for me to make this consideration without having a little bit more fleshing out of what the class C option would look like compared to the class B. And I just wanted to ask a process question to Mr. Luan. I understand that if this were to move forward in, in any way, then the, the, the more detailed plans would be considered, uh, with the actual ro- private road review. But would we get a chance to, uh, hear about, or at least have confirmed that, for instance, DTE had done a detailed review to ensure that the road is not going to interfere with the utility line access? Does that come before us as part of the packet of materials as well?
Yeah, I mean, that, because of those, because those power poles are so close to, you know, right, right on the edge of that existing drive. You know, that's something that, you know, either we or, uh, the township engineer would request information from. So that's, when, when there's a utility that's that close, we, we would, that's going to show up on either our report or OHM's report, and I can guarantee you, because of the comments of this meeting, that will, that'll show up on one of our reports, that that information be provided. By the way, just if I can add one thing, the, kind of to follow up on Commissioner Corto's comments. And, uh, that is, I, I did have a discussion with the township attorney today, and, um, the, the planning commission has done everything that's required for a private road variance as far as public notice and that sort of thing. And he's of the opinion that you could, uh, your, your motion, if this was to go forward, your motion to the township board could be for a class C private road. So there's, it could go right from here to the, uh, township board with the recommendation of the class C, if you guys think that's the direction you want to go. I had previously indicated that I thought it might have to have another public hearing, but that's not, uh, that is not the opinion of the township attorney.
That's good news.
Other commissioners. Commissioner Holland.
Yeah, I, I can respond a little bit just from, just some rolls of thumb as far as, uh, I'm sure, uh, Kathy Kyneth could go into more detail, but can't at this point. You know, when you think about a class, a class B road being 22-feet wide in a 66-foot right-of-way, that leaves 44-feet that's not road. And in a class C road in a 66-foot right-of-way, it's just, it leaves 50-feet that's not road, because you have 16-feet that's the road. And, um, when you think about a retaining wall, when your road is, is 27% narrower and it's going across a slope, that means that your retaining wall is also lower. So, you know, when, when you, you, just to give you an idea of how, in your mind, how it could look different, that, I mean, this is a way, this is a way I kind of visualize the way it goes away. In addition, in, in my years of doing some development, which were mostly smaller buildings, every time I added some more non-permeable area, as in a, a road is considered, I had to add more, more ditching or more stormwater detention, and there was more, and there was more runoff. So, uh, there's a lot of benefits to looking at the class C. Although the petitioner would, would be, um, just fine doing a B. I feel that having, as far as our reviews, to answer Commissioner Hyde's questions, that I think we have a fine, a very fine planner and a very fine engineer. The Water Resource Commission, you know, covers us most of the time. There's certain things that we can do on our own. And we have an attorney. So, you know, being on planning commission, we have, we have all these professionals that, that cover a lot of the basis for us. But particularly in the things that we've had tonight, you know, it comes back to some decisions that we, we, uh, are charged with making. So I, I guess when I hear that someone wants to put a, that we're going to be putting, we're going to be ripping out their front yard, you know, it's pretty much, it means they built their front yard in, in the right-of-way. And that, the portion, that right-of-way, other people have the rights to use it. And, um, I mean, I can support a, a class B road. However, I hear that, that, uh, I guess it was the fire chief's idea that the possibility of putting in a a water main, uh, to, uh, actually pump the water up the hill, particularly if, if he did look at a narrower road. And I don't know where I heard that, somewhere through the grapevine. I thought that was just a crazy, a wonderful idea. Because, uh, you know, we, we still have, uh, the EMS vehicles that would have to pass on the road. And, and, uh, troops of, of, of emergency works, and you have to get up there, but if, if, uh, if that's a possibility, I think it's a great possibility. So I'm almost done. But, yeah, I heard that somebody said good. You know, I look at, at a variance as, as in, that I look at it this way. In the strict, strict application, the terms of, of this ordinance would constitute a practical, practical difficulty, I have to say yes. And the practical difficulty, no, as far as going from an A to a, a, a class A to a class B road. And the practical difficulty is due to some physical condition peculiar to the property involved. And the practical difficulty is due to some physical condition peculiar to the property involved. And I have to say, yes, it is because it's topographically challenging. But the owner still has the right to use his property. Is the property, is the difficulty self-created? And I have to say it's not self-created. They didn't do anything to make it, make it happen. And is it a reasonable, necessary to mitigate the practical difficulty? And I, I would say that going from an A to a B or a C road is, is a reasonable amount as opposed to anything else. And is it interest to the public health, safety, and welfare? And I have to say, that's going to be up to the fire chief as to whether or not fire trucks and EMS vehicles can, can service the property. And I'm hearing tonight now that, that maybe there is a property, there's maybe some difficulty in servicing the existing homes on this community driveway. So there's a benefit to them. And then will it affect the, the use of the value of the adjacent properties in the area substantially in an adverse manner? And I have to say that, that, gosh, you know, I imagine that when these homes that are there were built, that a tree was cut down and that some grade changes took place. And that there was, there was maybe some more, more runoff than there was before they chased the deer and the possum and the rabbits off the property. So, and does the approval, is the, is this variance consistent with the intent of our ordinance? I feel it is. So I can support this ordinance. This, this variance.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Luan. I thought I heard you say that based upon the statute ordinance, that it would require that the maintenance agreement be in place for the approval of the variance?
Yeah, not, not for the variance, but for the, the private road. The, the actual private road, they'll have to have a maintenance agreement at that point.
So if we already know people are not inclined to agree on this private road, why would we give a variance before we know that the, I mean, we've heard numerous neighbors that come out against this.
Well, it'll, the, the private road maintenance, in those cases, this is, this would not be a unique circumstance where there's an existing old private drive that someone is asking for a private road variance for. And typically in those cases, it's not uncommon for the existing residents to not elect to be part of the maintenance agreement. They, they, you know, we can't require that. The applicant can't require it. So in this particular case, the people that would have to maintain this new road are this, are, are the new homes and not, not the existing homes. So the existing homes, if they didn't, frankly, if they don't want to be part of the maintenance agreement, they're not going to be part of the maintenance agreement. We can't make them. But there will be a maintenance agreement. And the maintenance agreement would be the property that are, the, the new property, the new homes, that would be taking advantage of this private road. In this particular case, I believe there are three that the applicant is proposing. And there is potential for others on the existing drive to the north. Now, those aren't part of this request. However, you have to recognize that this new private road, if approved, is going to be going right in front of vacant property that folks own. And so it, it's not, certainly not out of the realm of possibility that they will someday want to build a house and utilize this road. I, in the past, I've indicated that there's up to nine homes that could, that are existing and proposed that could access this road. So typically in the case where you've got neighbors that don't want to be included in the private road maintenance agreement, the maintenance agreement would be written in such a way to allow additional, to allow other homes to be part of it at some time in the future if they want. So there's some vacant property that could use this. Well, if you write the maintenance agreement to indicate that any of this vacant property, if they want to utilize this road, they have to become part of the ma, you know, they have to sign on to the maintenance agreement. But the existing homes?
Excuse me.
They wouldn't.
The maintenance agreements do not necessarily run with the land.
Well, there would be, the maintenance agreement's going to be recorded. So it's going to, it's going to run with the land. It's going to run with the property. So we, you know, we've never tried to hold up a private road variance because there's one or two people that don't want to sign on to the maintenance agreement. I mean, that happens, that happens every time. And, and we, so we get the ones we can get and they're responsible for maintenance. And then if future property owners want to sign on, the maintenance agreement is written in such a way that they can have themselves at some future date.
Right. They could, they could agree to agree. But it doesn't necessarily run with the land just because it's recorded, as to be in the deed. But anyway. Yeah, I've just been trudging through.
Could I have, make sure that everyone except the commissioners are muted? Sorry to interrupt, Commissioner Moore. Please go ahead. Yeah, thank you.
I was just going to say that I've been wading through a lot of these materials that I received today. And some of it is not necessarily related to the issue of the variance, but some of it is. And I wonder, it would have been more well-rounded if the attorney, Attorney Fink had those, those other additional information about the deeds. Because one of the questions I have is the initial owners of the properties surrounding the road or the driveway, whatever you want to call it, did they, or were they the only persons affected by the easement? And thereby being other property owners that came along later would not necessarily be privy to that easement? And I don't have a way of looking, because I was looking at the dates on these various deeds from 1969 to, I think it was another deed, 1983. And then of course, there's later deeds in 2018. That would require a little bit more digging into the deeds. And I just think about easement that I have where I live to have, be able to use the road in a turnaround. It specifically speaks to those landowners that own the land in that area. So one of the questions I had in my mind, looking at the, these materials that were provided today and these various deeds, et cetera, that I believe Commissioner Hyde provided some of it, is whether or not these other later landowners, and I don't know when the, the current applicants really own their land. And maybe it's a moot issue if they own their, own their property back in 1969 as well. So it would have been nice if, if that had been a more developed question for the attorney, for the township attorney. I'm sympathetic though, I would say. Only a property that is, you have no access point to it, seems patently unfair to the, to the property owner. So I'm, and yet we have many, many residents, you know, I should say furthermore, we have many, many residents that have come out and spoken against this for a variety of reasons. But I'm putting aside the slope and the grade and all of that because I'm more concerned about whether or not the easement allows this. And I, I've read Mr. Fink's letter and understood it. But like I say, I wish, wish that these other collateral documents were available for his review as well.
I'm not sure they weren't. Do, Doug, do you have, Mr. Luan, do you have an idea of what was given to?
They're all registered.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know, no, I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what the new documents he has. He has, he has all the, all the information that the applicant has provided with regard to the properties and the access easement. It was, it was quite a volume of information that Mr. Fink received. I, I don't have that in front of me, what, what he was given. But it, it was, it was a pretty significant amount of information and background on these properties.
Have, have any of the owners, any of the property owners along the road said straight up that, that they do not have a right to put that driveway in their front yard? That they, there is no easement there? I don't think anybody has, has ever said that. And I believe they're all recorded. And I believe, you know, I believe that that's what our attorney went and did his research on. And, and that's, that's where the opinion came from.
Commissioner Cartel. You may be frozen. Commissioner Hyde.
I just wanted to state to Commissioner Moore that anything that I had forwarded was sent to me, I did not research it. If something, if a correspondence was sent to me, I forwarded it to the planning commission, that would be the only involvement I had in those documents.
Commissioner Cartel.
Sorry, I keep having internet problems. Thank you. I, I spoke with Mr. Fink right before this meeting. And he did point out that although he did have the applicant's luminous packet, you know, a title search had not been done. And the material that was sent right before this meeting, he had not had a chance to review. But he did also point out that interpretation of those easements may be a, a legal matter for the courts to set, to decide. Because there are some decisions that, that fall in various directions interpreting the, the legal use of easements for, for roads and what constitutes an undue burden.
But that would be the courts as opposed to the planning commission, I think. Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, so my recollection is from the previous meeting that the petitioner was all on board with a, a Class C road. And I think that would have less impact on the natural features on site. So I think that's probably what we're hopefully going to move forward with unless the petitioner decides they'd rather have a Class B or the fire department decides otherwise. But it's my, also my recollection and maybe Mr. Luan or the petitioner could answer this, but there was a maximum of nine parcels. They were never going to exceed nine parcels out there that accesses off that road. Is that, am I, am I correct on that memory?
Yeah, well, that was one of my suggested conditions.
Oh, okay. So as long as we're, we're still okay with, and the fire department's okay with no more than nine parcels maximum, otherwise they come back in and upgrade to a B or an A, that seems somewhat reasonable. And then there was another question that was brought up at the last meeting. It was the kind of the, the ask, and we were discussing about possibly, you know, pedestrian access along Honey Creek. Did we get anywhere with looking into that, what would be required? And maybe I'll ask the petitioner if they'd be willing along Honey Creek to dedicate some land for the future. I, I don't know if this is going to come to fruition in your lifetime, but if we don't ask now, we, we'll never get it. So I'm just wondering if they're open to that suggestion and what, if we had any more information on what would be required for getting it like a pedestrian type of access?
I, I don't have any additional information on that. I relayed that comment, or actually, the applicant was aware of that comment from the last meeting. I don't, you know, I, I just have to say, as the township planner, I don't, I, I, I wouldn't want to marry those two ideas to a variance request. I don't think giving an easement for public access makes this variance any better or any worse. It's, the, the variance is the variance and it's either good or bad. You know, either meets the requirements or doesn't meet the requirement. I, you know, if, if the applicant wants to do that, I, I guess that's, that's fine. It's kind of a separate issue. I, I would not want to promote or start, you know, any kind of precedent that, you know, we, we would be favorable towards a variance if the applicant was going to, you know, give us an easement. I know that's not exactly what you're saying, but that, that makes me very uneasy to get in, to get into that conversation.
Thank you. I, I also, I really think with all of the concerns that were brought up, most of them are natural features concerns, that a Class C road makes a lot of sense. I also think there is the, the least amount of damage construction-wise and so forth. If we do do that dry fire main with hydrants at each residence, that's something that I did at a camp. It was, it provided 20-some buildings with fire protection. And it, it worked, it works very well and it was tested. The other option is to do turnouts. However, when you do turnouts, you have to determine, they have to be at every residence. They, you know, you, you start doing more grading. You're adding to the impervious area of the road. And if you, if you do the main, it's underground and it adds a little bit to the maintenance. But it allows much more flexibility in the routing of the road. And so I would be in favor of the Class C road with the engineered dry fire main that would allow the pumper trucks to remain at East Delhi and they wouldn't have to deal with turning around and going back on such a narrow road. And it would have to be subject to approval by Chief Hood to do that. He did indicate that he thought that that was a, a good possibility. Commissioner Cartel.
Just briefly, for completeness, the other alternative he suggested would be to require sprinkler systems in any residences to be built there so that fire truck access would not be as big an issue. That would, that's just another.
And I have to say that the residential sprinkler systems are not, what should I say, they're not robust. And what happens with a commercial fire suppression system is they all have connections, so a pumper truck can feed the sprinkler system in case there's an issue. A residential sprinkler system does not. And so you wouldn't have the same firefighting capacity if you just had sprinklers. It, now, if you did both, you'd have double. But I, I think the, just the, the fire hydrant piece gives the firefighting capacity. I don't know. Commissioner Holland?
Let's make everybody do it. No, you know, you know, it's, it seems somewhat redundant to me, I guess.
Unless it wouldn't cover the new home, or the existing homes. Is, is there, is someone ready to make a motion?
I will. Regarding Private Road Variance 19001, East Delhi Private Road. Based upon the information received from the applicant reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the plan meets the variance criteria contained in the private road ordinance as noted. The intent of a private road variance is in part to enable variances to be granted and conditions attached to the variance to facilitate the upgrading of prior non-conforming rights of way and private roads to the standards of this chapter. In a reasonably practical manner, including but not limited to such rights of way, the private roads as have been established, recorded, construction or main, constructed or maintained prior to the date of adoption of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived, which cannot be brought into conformity with this chapter without unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty. or practical difficulty due to soil conditions, topographical considerations, or other factors. The following factors are found that ju, found that justify a private road variance. The subject private drive is a pre-existing non-conforming roadway. And the applicant is proposing to upgrade the non-conforming private drive in a reasonably practical manner into a Class B private road, which is an improvement over the existing non-conforming private drive. Or to a Class C private road, which is an improvement over the existing non-conforming private drive if approved by the fire, by the fire department, fire chief hood and the trustees. The existing non-conforming private drive and easement were established prior to the current private road ordinance. Upgrading the roadway into a conforming Class A private road would cause unnecessary hardship and practical difficulty as added additional grading, tree clearing and disruption of the area would occur, thus negatively impacting the character of this part of the township. Specifically, the east, eastern edge, easternmost edge of the proposed private road contains severe slopes and vegetations that would be impacted by a conforming Class A private road. Additionally, a Class C road, number five, additionally, a Class C road would be more environmentally compatible with, with the property. The planning commission therefore recommends to the township board to approve private road variance number 19001. The approval is conditioned upon the following. Concerns, concerns noted in the township planners review dated December 21, 2020. Concerns noted in the township engineers review dated December 11th, 2020. Number three, based on the plan submitted, uh, that a maximum of six new home sites be pr, provided access to the new private road. Uh, and I don't know if we need to put in never to, to exceed nine. Would that be necessary, Doug, or no?
I think that'd be fine. Yeah.
And if the township attorney provided the, in, in, an opinion that verifies the applicant's right to improve the existing access easement prior to submission of the private road plan. Should the attorney's opinion indicate that the easement cannot be improved as, as requested, the subject variance shall be rescinded and no private road plan shall be submitted for review.
Is there support? Support from Commissioner Chang? Uh, any further discussion?
Are there any additions or changes that I may have missed on that? Cause it's.
I was just curious that you, you left it open to either Class B or Class C. And it's not clear how that decision would be made, other than that Class C would be contingent on approval from chief hood. I would be more comfortable recommending a Class C right away contingent with approval from Chief Hood. Since we're all agreed that that's a lower impact road, so I'm curious why. I mean, I would offer a friendly amendment to strike the Class B road.
You're unmuted.
I'm sorry, what if Chief Hood declines on the Class C road? Then they have nothing approved. So I kind of want to do an or in case Chief Hood doesn't agree to a C.
Well, can that, can Class B can be, sorry, can Class B road be contingent on Chief Hood rejecting the plan for the Class C road?
I think so. Yeah. Yeah, 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 I think so. Yes.
Under the way I stated it, it could go either way depending on Chief Hood, right?
Yeah, but I think you want to be specific that you're, you're directing this as a Class C. And, and it, it won't come back as a Class B unless Chief Hood just rejects it.
Oh, okay. So in item number.
Yeah, so there isn't an option. It's only if there's a rejection.
So going back to the following factors are found that justify a private road variance. We're going to, the, the number one is the subject private driver is a pre-existing non-conforming roadway. Number two, the applicant is proposing to upgrade the non-conforming private drive in a reasonably prac, uh, practical manner into a Class B private road, which is an improvement over the existing non-conforming private drive. And then if we go down to number four. Or I guess we write in there, we'd say or into a Class B private road. If a Class C private road is rejected by the fire chief. Is that clear enough or Doug?
Well, I think the wording has to specify that, uh.
Take a stab at it then.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I missed it twice, so go. Sorry, I should've just let you go last time.
I would just say that, yeah, I would just say that the planning commission recommends a Class C private road. Unless rejected by township fire chief.
Contingent on approval from the fire chief. Otherwise, the Class B private road as proposed, although even that was sort of contingent on the fire chief of figuring out those turnarounds. They had the T at the end, but. Sorry, Doug, you had the, you had the better wording.
No, I forgot what that was.
So you think a transcriber can get this figured out?
Yeah, well, you guys have to check the minutes, so if it's not what you want at the end, but I think that the idea here is that it, the planning commission is recommending, after all the motion you made, they're recommending a Class C private road rather than a Class A private road. And it would, however, if the township fire chief were to reject the Class C private road, then the Class B would be, um, would, would, would be what, uh, would be permitted based on this variance.
So for the transcriber, what he said?
And we did get the, um, fire main in there, right?
Oh.
Yeah, I think it has to be a Class C with the fire main.
That would be, that would be chief's hood contingency in order to approve it, so I think it wouldn't come back with, that is, is his approval anyway.
I, well, because he gave different options, we have to say with a standing water pipe fire main system.
Dry, with a dry water main?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'd be the Class C road with a dry water main for fire.
Fire.
Water transmit, pumper truck transmission.
That sounds good. Okay, any, uh, further discussion? Commissioner Carteau.
I just wanted to respond again briefly to the, the many concerns we heard. That I, I think all of us, I agree and the master plan agrees that this is a wonderful natural area to protect. But the, but, but the landowners do have this easement that allows the road building and so that's not the question before us tonight. So just, just a reminder that, um, much as we might want to protect the area, that's not the choice before us.
Yeah, and I just also want to, um, mention to both the petitioner and to, um, our, you know, the concerns that, um, we do have a water features and wetland buffer protection ordinance in our zoning code and that will, um, it, it does, um, talk about the steep slopes and the setbacks and all of those things and I, and I would encourage people to read that, uh, and especially the petitioner, because that will be an important part to, in, in the, uh, uh, a, a, as it moves forward in, uh, both road development and the, uh, single family home construction. Any other commissioner comments or can? All right. Roll call vote, please. Secretary Chang.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Carteau.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right. Then moving on in our agenda, it is, um, quarter of 11. And I would propose that, um, the U D ordinance was just for discussion. Um, I don't, I think there isn't any, um, I don't think there's a timeline. I mean, we want to get to it, but, um, we can probably push that to the next, uh, meeting. And what I, I would like to get to are the, uh, meeting minutes, because some of the things that are going to, uh, the trustees are contained in those minutes. And we do need to, um, approve those. And then I, I guess, uh, before we do that, if there are any reports that are important that can't wait two weeks, on, uh, commission activity, I will entertain those at this point now. Any, any reports that need to be made? Okay, then let's move to the minutes. And we'll go ahead and, um, and I think those start in, on page 220 of the packet, in case people need to refer to that. The minutes of 426. Are there any corrections or revisions?
I just had a brief question.
Yes.
On that particular date, there are no reports and commission reports, um, listed. All, all of them are listed, none. Was that a, a date that we met very late and did not do those? I, I, I didn't have clearly on my own personal notes whether we had.
I didn't have that in my notes, but.
Yes, we adjourned, we adjourned at 11:02.
Yeah, thanks. That, that says it went late. Yep. Okay, uh, may entertain a motion to approve the 426 20, should be 2021 minutes. Moved by Commissioner Moore, support by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? A roll call vote, please. Secretary Chang. You're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, yes. Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Carteau.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes.
Okay, approved.
All right, moving to the, uh, minutes of, uh, 56 2021.
I move that we approve the minutes of 56 2021.
Support. That was moved by, uh, Commissioner Carteau and supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any other discussion or comments? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Chang.
Okay. Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Carteau.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Chang, yes. Culbertson.
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Okay, moving to the minutes of 510 2021.
I have one comment.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Hyde.
On page five of that, 236 of the, uh, tonight's agenda. I believe that the last sentence under item 12, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we are considering the park green space on Jackson Road.
Okay. That does make it more specific. The proposed, it would be considering the proposed.
Correct. Thank you.
So we are considering the proposed park green space on Jackson, on Jackson Road as.
People might not get the reference otherwise.
Commissioner Carteau.
Um, the, the only place that I'm, I saw the sustainability task force that we approved mentioned was in the chair report. Maybe I am just not being able to effectively see it, but what, did, didn't we consider this new business?
In a later report, in a later set of minutes, I believe.
Aren't we on May 10? Did we not?
It was May, um, wasn't it, wasn't it May, I'm just looking May 12th, but it's not there.
We didn't do it during the sound test.
No. We did it on the 10th.
Last regular meeting.
It was in the notes somewhere.
Well, like I said, it's in the, it's in the chair report, but it's not in new business and maybe that's, that's fine, but I.
No, page 228, no, 228 of the agenda packet. We took a vote on it. Uh, new business item C.
Oh, there we are. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Creation of this stability test.
Yes, okay, I just.
I knew I seen it somewhere.
Flipping through these notes and I'm just not finding where things are. I thank you.
Yep, it's kind of hard to do four sets of minutes. Yes. Okay, um, all right, so are there any other comments on the 510 2021 minutes? As corrected. Moved by Commissioner Moore, support by Commissioner Carteau. Okay, any other comments? Roll call vote. Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Carteau.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Chang, yes. Commissioner, Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes. Okay, moving to minutes 512 2020.
On the title page, I believe it says Monday, but we met out there on a Wednesday.
A Wednesday. Should be Wednesday, May 12th. Thanks for reading the title.
Skip, read over it.
Skip, read over.
Um, we should also, um, note that we went to, um, and, and there was the address that was in the recording of the third site that we did the sound demonstration. Um, so the sound demonstration at the barn site was not the forty-six, forty-five. I'm wondering if, if we want to have the actual DBA measurements in the, in the record. I did not write those down, and I can't verify that that was correct.
Cause measurement at the, at the nearest neighbor was at sixty-eight, twenty-one was the road number. I don't remember what that road actually is, but we could look that up.
Okay.
And the measurement there was thirty-seven point five DBA.
At the neighbor. Okay.
The sixty-eight, twenty-one.
Yeah, because, and then the sound demonstration at the barn site itself was, they were doing that at sixty-four DBA and that, but that was just to illustrate the what the sixty-four was like. It wasn't. Um, so there's an issue with, um, item three.
We have a recording of the, of, of the event.
Right.
Could we approve this with, uh, that to be checked and corrected?
I thi- why don't we, um, wait, um, and get, I, I think we need to, um, let's not approve these minutes and get tho- those, um, pieces of information correct, and then we can approve the minutes.
The only reason I was suggesting doing it the other way was that I thought perhaps the board of trustees might have to take action on the Heron Farms. Perhaps not. Okay.
Yeah, they don't have to take, I mean, this, this will go on to the town or when it's ready to go on to the township board, and if the minutes aren't ready, it won't be put on it.
Um, yeah, I think we have to, I think we have to correct them, um, and get the right information on, and because it's, you know, rather specific, I think we need to get that corrected. And these minutes, I, I, I didn't have enough time to go back and, and, and get that information, so.
I can send you the notes that I took, but I don't know if that would be considered official.
Yeah, that would, uh, that would be helpful, and then we also have the recording, but I know the recording was hard, um, to hear all the time. Because they gave a, a background and, um, it, yeah, uh, well, because there was a background reading and a, um, with the music reading at each site. And and if we can't be specific, we can say that it was, you know, below a certain amount or something like that. But I know the second site, it was actually less. The background noise was less and, uh, the overall reading was less. Okay. Um, then we'll, um, I don't think, we won't take action in those minutes, so, um, all right, um, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I should ask, is there any other business?
I just had a quick question about whether the master plan was ready to submit to the board of trustees.
Oh, yes, the status of that, yeah. Mr., uh, Mr. Luhan, can you let us know? Cause I, I don't.
Well, it's not gonna be on tomorrow's agenda for the board. Um, we're, we're still. Um, I got it back from, um, our kind of word processor, uh, Friday, and I haven't had a chance to check it. So if, if, if it got to the township board, it would have been rushed, and I didn't think, uh, we wanted the township board agenda.
So will it, will it be ready to bring it the next regular meeting then?
Should be, yeah, should be the first meeting and, or it should be ready.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other matters? Was Commissioner Moore?
I just wanted, um, I've been having problems the last couple of meetings, and, and when I, um, it must be my internet connection. And when I try to get back on, I can't, and so I think it has to do with taking me out of the waiting room.
Yeah, it does.
But I wanted to just ask folks if we can have some system, like the first email I sent, I sent to Jan, I sent to Doug. Not sure anybody's been interested in emails, and then I started sending them to everybody. Now, I think about maybe a way. Maybe that's it. I should just send it to everybody and somebody on the commission will see it.
Yeah, cause I have to admit, I'm not, yeah, I don't, I don't look at my, I'm trying to keep my phone, um, there for messages, um, in that case, but I will email everyone myself, and maybe, um, if there's someone else that could do that, so you, so everyone could at least send it to two people, um, if they're out. That would be great. Okay, I will, I will do that. Is there someone else that will monitor their, their text?
Yeah, I, I could do that, since I'm hosting, that's a, if, cause I'm, you're right, I'm not looking at my emails right now, and so text would be the best way to get me.
Okay, I'll, I'll send mine out, and Doug, if you could send yours, that would be great.
Okay.
I'll do it right now, otherwise I'll forget. Um, okay, we'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Uh, moved by Holland, support by Commissioner Corto. Roll call vote, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Holland.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes, and we're adjourned at ten fifty-nine.
Three minutes earlier. Then eleven oh two.